Now come to order, Mrs. Sender, will you call the roll please?
Mrs. Packill, here. Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mrs. Interhart?
Here. Mr. Bacon, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My leaders, it is a pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May as well stay at the mic for communications with the host school.
Members of the Board of Education, Dr. Schuler, leadership members, leadership team members, friends, staff and colleagues, and thank you for joining us this evening. Are we good? This is not only the time of the call.
I'm over the board.
Dr. Schuler and leadership team members, friends, staff and colleagues, and thank you for joining us this evening, and I welcome you to Sandberg School. On behalf of the Sandberg community, it is my pleasure to extend a very special welcome to Dr. Schuler, as he joined the District 200 and Sandberg family. Thank you for taking the time to get to know us on your visits to our schools. It was clear that you are genuinely interested in Sandberg. I look forward to working together with you and your leadership team as we strive to provide the highest quality education for all of our students at Sandberg and in District 200. I also acknowledge the Sandberg staff, some of whom are here this evening, for their unwavering resolve to make Sandberg School the best that we can be for our students and family. I'd like to recognize my staff members. Could you stand up, please? Thanks for commenting, too. I recognize this would not be possible without the support of the community that we enjoy and an outstanding PTA. Representing our PTA tonight is Aaron Purser, our PTA president. Where's Aaron? Thank you. We at Sandberg are enjoying what we are calling the best year ever. We've said that a lot so far this year, and I assure you, it's not just a catchphrase. We have decided from the get-go that this year will indeed be the best. We know that challenges will arise, stressful moments will occur, and frustration may even set in, and that we cannot define the best year ever by these or any other circumstances. What it does mean is that we are choosing to have the best year ever this year, no matter what we face. It is an attitude and a choice, and by embracing it, we will only become stronger. We also understand that attitude alone won't make it happen. We have been busy, we have been busy planning to make it happen, following our few examples. To start out, we have an aggressive school improvement plan aimed at strengthening the core. This is reflected in our master schedule, which has allowed our reading teachers to work together with classroom teachers in providing guided reading, the flexible grouping of students for instruction, and co-teaching of lessons. We also have a team working together to strengthen the core by working on the writing process. Our goal is to provide continuity of writing instruction from kindergarten through fifth grade, including the consistent use of a common vocabulary. We believe that students can be explicitly taught strategies to perform at their best. To that end, we are already using an acronym based on the word "best," B-E-S-T, to help teach these skills. "B" is be attentive, listen, follow directions carefully, read passages thoroughly before responding. "E" each and every time. Doing one's best needs to become a habit. "S" show pride in your work. When you are finished with an assignment or project or an assessment, ask yourself, "Does this represent my best work? Am I proud of this?" And "T" take your time. Slow down when necessary. Don't rush through. Make sure the goal isn't just to finish, but to finish well. We are also in the midst of a process to identify Sandberg's, Sandberg School's guidelines for success. These guidelines will serve as our foundation for maintaining a successful school environment. We are continuing to increase the ways we have integrated technology to enhance student learning and to help teachers do their jobs more effectively and efficiently. For example, Google Calendar has helped us streamline the management of computers and shared devices. The increased number of available tablets means students are using these devices to do research, collaborate with classmates and others, communicate and perform other classroom-based activities. Blended learning opportunities in math and reading have increased in our classrooms. Many formative and summative assessments are now being done electronically, some allowing for immediate feedback. As a result, instructional adjustments occur more frequently. Google Survey has been used often to gather feedback from staff, students, and parents in making building-wide decisions, and the differentiation of instruction has increased due to teachers using computers and devices for individualized learning centers and group work. I certainly know that none of what I have spotlighted this evening would even be possible without a strong Board of Education. I acknowledge that it is in large part due to the members of this board that we have here, that we at Sandberg are able to enjoy the best year ever. I personally extend my great appreciation to you tonight, and I also have a message from some Sandberg students representing our entire school. Please enjoy.
Thank you for being committed to public service.
Thank you for listening to the community.
Thank you for working to create a vision for our schools.
Thank you for making tough decisions that help us as students.
Thank you for showing us what it means to be respectful and working together as a team.
Thank you for taking the time to learn about our school.
Thank you for being interested in each and every child, no matter who we are.
Thank you, Mrs. Interhart.
Thank you, Mr. Roman.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Mrs. Cogburn. You deserve it.
Thank you, Mr. Gambiani.
Thank you, Mr. Matheson.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson.
We all thank you!
Thanks to Pete Sandberg at Ableton, join the best year ever!
Thank you, thank you for your kind words and for, uh, thank you for the students doing that. Please, they pronounced my name perfectly, which is so rare, so you adults can do that.
Five or six tries.
But thank you, that was wonderful. Thank you for your kind words. We, we hope that we can do everything that we can, and we will do everything that we can to make sure Sandberg and all of our schools have their best year ever.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I choked up. Modifications to the agenda, are there any modifications the board members wish to make? I actually have one that I want to throw out there to you. Representative from our audit firm was taken out today, and the firm was not able to get somebody to fill in for him to present to us tonight. Nevertheless, Mr. Farley is prepared to discuss the audit. I know the members of the Finance Committee have reviewed the results of the audit, so I guess I leave it up to tonight fellow board members if you'd like to keep that on the agenda, or if you'd like to remove it and discuss it at another meeting.
A member of the Finance Committee that we are more than prepared to present it, I'd like to make public as soon as possible, and we've, we've discussed it in detail at the Finance Committee and before we go.
Okay, good, then we'll leave it on the agenda. I just wanted to give you the opportunity to, to say go or no go, based on that. Okay, recognitions and achievements, Dr. Schuler?
Absolutely. We have actually three special recognitions tonight, and I actually, you know, I just want to, want to start before I introduce the first by thanking the Sandberg staff for the warm welcome tonight. This was the very first school that I visited as I started to get around, so I think it was the second or third day, I think that I was here that I came for a visit to the Sandberg staff, and was certainly very warmly welcomed here, so thank you again. Our first recognition, gosh, it was probably again, Mr. Claypool, I think a couple of weeks ago, where I happened to be over at Wheaton Warrenville South in your office, I think, for a meeting, I'm not sure what we were chatting about, but a couple of staff members came in very, very, very excited to share with, with Mr. Claypool, and I just happened to be there, some exciting news about an award and a recognition that the Physical Education and Health Department received. So it is my pleasure to introduce Matt Janisak, the department chair, and Matt, I'm gonna let you come up and take it away, if you wouldn't introduce the rest of your team and tell us a little bit about the recognition.
All right, on behalf of our department here today, we have Maureen Kerman, Erica Valente, Teresa Arachia, Michelle Schaefer, Liz McCants, Art Tang, and then Principal Mr. Claypool. On behalf of our department, we are very honored and humbled to not only receive this award, but be recognized on behalf of you guys. We have an outstanding department, an outstanding curriculum that's delivered over the course of four years, and we're not gonna bring up Maureen here, just gonna talk to you guys about all the specifics with the award and what went in to make this possible. So at this point, I'm gonna turn over to, to Maureen Kerman.
Thank you for having us today. This was a voluntary program where we submitted our curriculum and our strategies to the leaders of health and physical education in the state of Illinois, and to be scrutinized. It took a few tries to get everything right, but it really did help build our program. I'd like to just really focus on the team effort with everyone, thank you so much, and the, the process of having the chance to get together and work with each other and having even the PLC, the PLC time made a big difference to have that collaboration and come up with the best strategies and the strongest curriculum that would benefit our students the most, so thank you for that.
That would be great, if, Matt, if you would, if you would bring your, your team up, we would really love to shake your hands and again say congratulations on the Blue Ribbon Award for Excellence. Again, thank you, I thank you very much, and thanks for taking the time to be here tonight. Two other quick recognitions that we want to do, I think, as, as Mr. Bacon kindly mentioned in the, the video from the, the students, there is a special day coming up on Saturday, I believe, in Illinois. It is designated as Board Member Appreciation and Recognition Day, and so very clearly, the efforts of Board of Education members around the state of Illinois, it's a volunteer job, they give up their time and service to the, the community, and, and one of the things in particular that I wanted to mention about the District 200 Board is that recently at a, at a meeting from the Illinois Association of School Boards, the Wheaton Warrenville Community Unit District 200 Board was recognized with the School Board Governance Recognition Award. Couple of years ago, our board received that for the first time, and I believe at the time, they were the only school board in the DuPage region. At the, the meeting recently, I think there were two other school boards that joined them in the area, but again, it is a recognition that goes to, to, to school boards that demonstrate adherence to the guiding principles of the Illinois Association of School Boards at excellence through their governance. So Board of Education, on behalf of the community, I congratulate you for, for this honor.
For those of you who did not, we each have a, we each received a pin, so I don't know if everyone got one, I have four, or three or four extra here that were not given out, so. Did everybody get their pin?
I mentioned three recognitions, so one more that, that I'd like to announce tonight, and I asked Rosemary Swanson to give a little bit of help with this, if she's got any other comments, and I think you've got a, a special little gift. Coming up in a little bit over a week, there's an opportunity that members of our school board will have to attend, a very important training opportunity for school board members. There's an annual conference, they get an opportunity to attend, to, to gain some valuable training as, as a school board member, and there are a couple of special recognitions that are given at that conference, and one of them is a recognition called the Holly Jack Award. It's given annually to one board secretary throughout the state of Illinois for their accomplishments, their achievements, and for what they do to help support both student learning and the governance work that the, the school board does. And so I'm pleased to announce that Mary Lou Sender will be receiving that award at the conference this year. Mrs. Swanson, if you have anything you want to add, please do.
Well, we, we just could not be more thrilled to have Mary Lou get this award, and just so that the public understands what this is, this, this conference is actually the triple I conference, so it's the Illinois Association of School Boards, Association of Business Officials, and Association of Administrators. I'm amazed in that, but anyways, it, it, so it's training opportunities for all of those groups. One of the things that Mary Lou has done in her career has been to work to institute a training opportunity for administrative assistants back at that conference, which was never there before. And it started with about maybe less than 10 people, five people the first time, and last time there were 180 people. So Mary Lou was responsible for that. Now, this Holly Jack Award, Holly Jack was the woman that worked with Mary Lou in instituting this award, and she passed away a while back, but she had many fine qualities, and was so beloved that they wanted to have an award in her honor, and that's how that award got established, and Mary Lou, as I said, was one of the founding members of this, this training strand. But beyond that, just so you know, the way this award is chosen is, the selection committee is the past year's present board president of the year, the last year's board business official of the year, last year's superintendent of the year. So for Mary Lou to receive this award on a statewide basis is the equivalent of Mary Lou being recognized as the Illinois Administrative Assistant of the Year. And she truly is, and you know, we just received the, the announcement about the government's awards, and it's very fitting that Mary Lou's award should be announced at the same time because honestly, Mary Lou is part of our board team, and for us to achieve that level of governance would really not have been possible without all of the supportive efforts that Mary Lou puts in behind the scenes for us. So she, she helps her peers throughout the state, she helps her peers throughout the country, she's very involved in improving the electronic school board capabilities, but she has very much helped our board and our district for years and years and years, and we always say she makes each board member think that we are her special and favorite board member. So the secret's out tonight, apparently, we're all liked by her, but, but she does such a wonderful job, and so we're thrilled that she, that she received this award, and it's long overdue in our estimation, but very well deserved. And we had an application that we had to fill out, and the application included our statement as to why she deserved the award, but it also included letters of support from many of her peers and government officials in the area with whom she's worked throughout the years, community members with whom she's worked, and so she really has earned this reward, this award, not just on the basis of a day-to-day job, but really her impact in the whole community and the whole district. So we do have a little something for you, this is your, all those support letters and applications for you to take home and, and look at, and just remember how much you are loved and brought up by so many people. So congratulations, Mary Lou.
There are no words to express how humbled and honored I am, one to receive this, I have my name in the same category as Holly Jack, who was an amazing, amazing woman, but more than anything else, to be recognized by this award is just a gift, thank you very much. Rosemary, your efforts will never be forgotten, thank you.
Thank you, and well deserved, well deserved, Mary Lou, thank you so much. At this point in time, if our staff, while you're all welcome to stay, we know you have work to do and getting ready for your students tomorrow, so if, if you want to stay for this wonderful, interesting, watery board and all those other marvelous things that we're going to talk about, you certainly may, but if you would care to go do your real work, you're more than welcome to, to leave, and thank you so much for coming out tonight, thank you for your support, and I know that we appreciate what you do for our students every day, every day, so thank you. Now time for a public comment on agenda items. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a question or comment on agenda items. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district, and public input in a variety of venues is very important. The board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting, so please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name and address if you would, and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes and be factual and courteous, and tonight include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. If you feel your manner needs to be discussed in more detail, thank you. Please attend the board's chance to chat or present your comments to us in writing. So the first person to speak is Gary Time.
Gary Time, 1310 Champion Forest Court, in fact, just down the block from here. Jimmy, I've seen it's been kidding me that I basically read my comments, so I'm gonna try to be less formal today. A comment was made at the last, at the last board meeting, which is committee of the whole, that, that if we can't measure a, a goal, then we shouldn't have it, and it was, it was kind of disputed, and, and I, and I kind of disagree, because I think, I think we should measure things. Education loves acronyms, in fact, another one was said tonight, "best." Another one is "smart," and I think that's something that's commonly used in the district, and "M" is measurement is part of that "smart." It's also said that education can't use business principles, and that's another thing that I disagree with. It's not always easy to measure things in business either. Let me give you an example. You know, you could have an R&amp;D group that basically creates a new product, it's, they've done it to specification, but the product doesn't sell, it fails in marketplace. Well, was that marketing's fault? Was it R&amp;D's fault? Was it advertising's fault? Was it, you know, was it sales' fault? You know, you don't know, unless there's, unless there's goals and measurements in each of those departments, it's hard to measure. So I believe that student achievement should be measured, because it prevents us from the temptations of advertising success, but hiding lack of success sometimes. We used to say, at least with the people that I worked, you measure what you treasure. So we need to roll up our sleeves on fin, not only on finance, but also on student achievement. So the, the handout that I, that I gave you, and there's a little chart behind it, basically talks about some of the things that have been recently said about ACT scores within our district. First of all, demographic subgroup percentages within District 200 High Schools have, have a favorable impact on ACT scores, they have for some time. I talked about that in the last board meeting, or not the last board meeting, but in the board meeting, I've been discussing further. State and national 2014 ACT scores also increased from 2013, both by point one, point, by point one points. 2014 ACT composite average of benchmark districts, these are the benchmarks that we use, increased point three versus the point two for, for District 200 from 2013. 2014 composite average of benchmark districts is point six points higher than, than District 200. All benchmark high schools scored higher ACT composites than Wheaton South in 2014. So it's against most states, although some states don't test every, every student, but it's a good, it's a good measurement. And I have some real concerns about the future with part testing, and maybe we'll talk more about that in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Longs?
Yeah, Harold Longs, Winfield, Illinois. Good evening, everyone. There's a lot happening on tonight's agenda. First, I'd like to start off with Policy 8.30 regarding community relations, item number four. I'd just like to state that Illinois State Law already bars weapons from schools. What does the following line mean in sentence number four? Any object that can be reasonable be considered a weapon, or looks like a weapon, or any other dangerous device. I believe that line four should be removed because it has no meaning or definition to it. My next topic is tax levy. Again, administration and board is going to ask, ask for as much money from the taxpayer, taxpayers as they can, because the test scores increasingly ever so slightly. Everyone should check out the Illinois report card, see the details behind the different test scores for the past few years. test scores for the past few years. I did, and this is what I found out. Nine of our schools have 75% of students beating state standards. The lowest is Johnson at 57.9%, and the highest is Longfellow at 90.7%. The district and newspaper, newspapers have been very excited by the uptick in average ATC, ATC scores. Yes, that is good news, but the percentage of students not meeting college readiness benchmark has increased in the past three years. How about the PSAE results of the 10th, 11th graders? Change 25 to 30% of the students are below standard, including a small percentage in a warning level. A good percentage of the high school graduates are not ready for college, for the college on the PSE and the ACT test. How is the district doing with the I-7 results at the lower grades? The performances, the performance over the last three years has shown no improvement and lower numbers for the percentage of students meeting standards. How can the board vote to increase taxes on property owners more while not improving the performance of the students that really need help, the lower 30%? FYI, I removed the lower income students from the results and it did not change the trend of the 30%. Thank you. And it's also, you can find these charts on the Illinois report card and you can see, you see the trends heading, you know, the non-exceeding is trending downward. Thank you.
I have somebody signed up who is, wants to speak on a non-agenda item. Does the board wish to allow that person to speak now? Okay. Maria?
Good evening, board members and guests. My name is Maria Pires and I had come to speak with you on behalf, on behalf of my fellow custodian who clean the school and community in Unit District 200. I have worked at Angel Lincoln School for six years. I work hard to keep the school clean and healthy for children, teachers, staff and guests. After all these years of the service, I am paid $10.25 an hour with no benefits. No, don't even a paid sick day or holiday. My question is why? We don't, we don't have these benefits? Because we are Latinos? We believe that the school benefits, oh, I'm sorry. We believe that the school district should use task players, dollars to pray, good jobs that help build our community up, not jobs that hurt a lot of us. We are here to ask for your help so we can get a modest raise in basic benefits to help our families. Please reach out to GCAs and use your power to help us win a better life and a better future for our community. Thank you for your time and consideration and I'm sorry for my English.
Thank you. Dr. Fu's public comment?
Superintendent's report? Thank you. I've got, I just five things that I wanted to mention on the superintendent report tonight. The first is that tomorrow evening, we will be hosting our second Senate Bill 16 forum. It's going to take place at Hubble Middle School. It begins at seven o'clock. Board members, I did want to mention that in front of you this evening is actually a, a document that, that just came our way, really in the last day and a half. And that's just to let you know that on Tuesday, November the 18th, at 3:00 PM, there has been a committee meeting scheduled out of the House to talk about Senate Bill 16. And so we, we have shared, one of the things that we will share at the forum tomorrow evening is we've had a lot of committee members that have said, what can we do to engage in the discussion around Senate Bill 16 and the impact on the, the school district? And, and so we've been able to encourage people to, to become active and, and to make phone calls. But this is one more thing definitely that, that our community members can do. There is an opportunity online to sign up, to submit either written testimony about Senate Bill 16 or simply to, to sign on, even if you're just signing on as a witness, it's not going to be present with your, your opinion on it. It is an opportunity that, that we want to make sure that, that everybody is aware of. So again, that's, that's in front of you. It's a sheet that's titled Senate Bill 16, Let Your Voice Be Heard in Springfield. So again, we, we certainly hope to see a turnout tomorrow evening. We're going to follow a very similar format to, to the evening that we hosted in Monroe, which is kind of a short presentation, an opportunity for a question and answer, and then an opportunity for some small group talk back and conversation. So please pass the word. We did that this morning. Yesterday, Tuesday, had a great day visiting our buildings to honor Veterans Day. I had a chance to, to visit six buildings and I know that board members were very active, out and about, but I, I gotta tell you what we do in each of our buildings to, to honor Veterans Day, simply amazing. There were phenomenal assemblies at each of the buildings that it was at, small group, full student body, just, I think, really a, a special day and certainly, I think very valuable for our students to be in school on that day, to have that opportunity to learn about Veterans Day and what it's all about. So I do want to thank our, our schools for that. I want to remind the board and community that tomorrow, there is an early childhood collaborative that's taking place. It's a breakfast, actually, sponsored by the Early Childhood Collaborative. That's, that's a group within the community that's come together to really look at how it is that we are servicing our, our early learners to ensure that when they get to kindergarten, they are in fact, ready to be successful in, in kindergarten in our schools. And certainly there are no lack of statistics out there about what it saves a school district if students do come to school ready to learn rather than requiring extensive intervention. So there is a breakfast taking place tomorrow at eight o'clock at the First Presbyterian Church, Joanna's nodding, so I think I got that right. And again, Joanna and I will, will be there. Couple of board members are joining us for that as well, I think, Arvin and Joanna. So thank you for that. I just want to let the board know that Rod Mack and I just recently finished a round of visits to each of our schools with really a focus on kind of taking a temperature check, on, on technology, as we talk a little bit later this evening about board goals. One of them is the center on technology and especially how it is that we can, can expand the instructional opportunities available to our students through technology. And so, and kind of readying for that goal and I think consistent with, with one of the charges the board came, came in coming in, Rod and I did pay a visit to each building to actually talk about the, the current state of our technology infrastructure. And I guess what, what I will, will tell the board in, in short is that the buildings universally said two things. We're ready for more professional development around technology and we're ready for more technology to, to really enhance learning. But we, we did get a lot of very positive feedback on the work that, that Rod has done to bring the infrastructure up to where it is and kind of the revamped support that's in place now to ensure that when we do have issues with technology, they're remedied very, very quickly. So I wanted to share that. And then finally, just a reminder that Friday is our next institute day within the district. I'm looking forward to the opportunity. I actually spent some time at, at Orangeville South High School. Their, their staff are doing some presentations on how it is that they're going about engaging learners in their buildings to address actually a number of the issues that I think, I may have heard about them earlier this evening under, under public comment. And so I'm very, very much looking forward to that opportunity to see some of the, the school improvement work that's happening at that, that high school, I think, that is making place across the board. So that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. We have consent agenda tonight of eight items. Acceptance of a gift to Liddier Elementary School. Acceptance of a gift to Westbrook Elementary School. Approval to post revised and proposed board policies. 2.120, 5.270, 5.280, 5.285, 5.290, 5.30, 5.310, 5.320, 5.35, 5.186, 5.330, 8.30, 8.40, 8, and 8.50 for public review and comment. Approval of the 2015-16 district calendar. Approval of a truck lease bid. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of minutes, October 7th, 2014 special closed session. October 8th, 2014 open session. October 22nd, 2014 committee of the whole. And October 23rd, 2014 special meeting. And approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to June 2013 as allowable by law. Approval of personnel reports to include employment, resignation, retirement, or leave of absence of administrators certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda? May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented? So moved.
Move by Mrs. Bromin?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Pacquiao. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have one question on the policy 5.330. I did ask this question by email to Dr. Schuler, but I know we're just posting this policy. It had to do with the vacation awarding of time for, let's see, classified staff? Right? I'm not sure if it's classified, 12-month staff? And just how the vacation time is awarded? I know, I just, I just want to make sure that we're protected in other ways. Should an employee leave in the middle of the tour of your period? A full vacation time.
Yep. So the two things Mr. Paulson mentioned on that. Number one, really two different groups govern through that policy. Those that are part of that collective bargaining agreement, which actually does have some very specific language in it about that. And then those that are not a part of that collective bargaining agreement are governed under a set of guidelines that are issued to them and that issue is addressed through that. And actually, there's reference in the policy to the fact that those guidelines issued to the non-union staff do set that out. So I think that's a very, very fair question, but I can assure you that you're covered as well on that.
Are there any other questions or discussion?
Just a comment to public to just remind, as Mr. Paulson mentioned, we get access to the board agenda on Friday afternoon and spend some time in the weekends, Monday, Tuesday, reviewing material. And to the extent we have questions about consent, that, that, agenda items plus anything else on the agenda, before they're to Dr. Schuler for answers. So many of the issues that come up on the consent agenda items are addressed by email, an email response, and prior to superintendent before the board meeting. And it's all available for public review. So the fact that you don't hear a lot of questions about consent agenda items tonight is attributable to the fact that we have a lot of these questions answered and responded by Dr. Schuler and staff already.
Any other comments or discussion? All right, and Mrs. Center, will you call the roll for the vote, please?
Mr. Bromin?
Yes.
Mrs. Pacquiao?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. We have a, a number one action item tonight is acceptance of the 2000, uh, see, I'm trying to do this without my glasses, it's not working. 2013-14 financial audit. May I have a, oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the 2013-14 financial audit as presented?
So moved.
Move by Mrs. Swanson?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Dr. Schuler?
Yep.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna write over to, to Mr. Farley, who's got a couple of introductory comments, I think, based on this having gone through. And again, just a reminder, this was shared earlier, but I will mention that the, the audit reports were received and were reviewed first in the board's finance committee. So there was considerable spent, time spent already with the auditors going through the, the report and digesting some of the information. So I'll hand it over to Mr. Farley.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. As Mrs. Intihar mentioned during modification section, our auditor who is going to be here tonight, Fauell, this afternoon, stomach flu that seems to be going around the area. So his colleague is presenting Hillside, the Board of Education there, may walk into this meeting and is going to try and raise back, so we may have him there. He also worked on our account. So each year, the Board of Education is charged with having an independent auditor come in and audit books for the school district. And I'm going to run through some of the highlights and then I'll turn it over to the finance committee board members, Mr. Matheson and Mrs. Swanson, who may have comments as well, but I'll try and hit the high points. You have two books in front of you. One is the actual audit document, the other is the management letter, letter two, communication with governance and management. Just want to hit a couple of high points in that document. And that is just two items that are normally found in there. They're related to financial reports and, and tracking of assets. Because of staffing reasons, we ask our auditors to do that, so that is listed as a material issue as far as the audit goes. And again, it's, the district's chosen not to hire staff to do that and to allow our auditors to do that, and it's not, not too common of a practice. To go, going to the, the actual audit itself, as we've informed the board in the past, our expenditures last year did exceed revenues by about 1.2 million or just under 1% in terms of a percent, mostly attributable to the health care costs that were incurred last year. We had, as we've talked about in prior meetings, we had a very substantially bad year from a health care standpoint and that threw our expenditures off. I didn't have your report, I just saw the first quarter report for, for this year and we're tracking about 600,000 muscle worth at this point last year. So it's a bit of good news, it's good news from a, we see a monetary standpoint, it's also good news, I believe, from a health standpoint, we want to be healthy, of course. The other item that impacted the budget last year to some degree was also the cost of tuition base for outplace students. I think we're close to 100 outplace students. Again, about 18% I believe are, are students in district or have some type of special service. About 100 of those are outplace. Financial profile score that we also talked about, we are, because of our expenditures exceeding revenues, we did move into that financial review section. You see, we strive to be in financial recognition. The state identifies financial review as the next highest level and they look for downward trends with my Catholic upbringing, I kind of guess it's purgatory. But that's, we're, you know, obviously, we're, we're in a position where we want to try and get us back to that recognition standpoint from review. As far as fund balance goes, that's obviously another important marker for the Board of Education. We have a policy between 25 and 40%. And we're at 28% at the end of the fiscal year. No other questions asked by Mr. Paulson. Also want to indicate that the audit includes the state on behalf payments for TRS of 30.4 million for last year. That's obviously a number that we put into our, is paid by the state, so it's a, shows up as a revenue and an expenditure, or shows up as an on behalf payment by the state and then under both the revenue and expenditure side, you know, it doesn't go through our books. Also worth noting that the 9.4% that is paid in by employees, for teachers, teachers make that payment. And I know the question comes up from time to time. Some things moving forward as well, just to keep on, on the radar, that we will be looking in the fall of 15, as far as our schedule goes, to be refinancing. So it's a kind of a preview of a coming attraction that we got a board pass resolution to indicate that we want to work on that. that we will be looking in the fall of 15, uh, as far as our debt schedule goes, to be refinancing. So it's a, kind of a preview of a coming attraction that we got a board pass resolution to indicate that we wanted to, uh, work on that. So as we look at our debt schedule, it was in the document, that's, uh, something as well. Uh, the annual financial report, which I mentioned, was in the, um, management letter or communication with management and governance. Uh, just that, uh, document along with these two documents will be posted once the board accepts the audit and documents. And we'll have that on the district website. We keep three years of audited financials and EFRs on the district website. Under the business office tab, uh, more folks can find that information. We'll have that out right away. I agree with Mr. Matheson, I'm glad we're moving forward tonight to get this, uh, accepted so we can put it out there. So with that, that's our kind of a quick 30,000 highlight level. I don't know if Mr. Matheson or Mrs. Swanson wants to go first?
If it's okay, I'll, I'll go first. If it's all right, I'll go first. Um, I wanted to thank Mr. Matheson. I was actually out of town, uh, during the finance committee. So, um, I did review the audit and sent him some questions, but really, Mr. Matheson did all the heavy lifting on this and given his expertise. He's the right person to do that heavy lifting, so I do appreciate that. Um, I, I just had a couple of general comments. Um, you know, I think when we talk about numbers and audits, you know, it all becomes about the numbers and such. But I, I think it's always good to remember that really the audit, our budget, is all really a story of what it is, our priorities are and what we're, we're doing uh, on behalf of the community for our children. And if you think about the audit that way and you think, you know, what you're looking at here is what we did last year for, for all of the kids. And so, you know, all those graduates that walked across the stage and those teams that competed, uh, the, uh, students who got special services, that is what these numbers really and truly mean. And so, we, you know, there's, obviously, it's important to make sure that everything is balanced and, you know, comes, comes out right. But I think it's good to remember what, what the point of the whole thing is. And, and I think, um, couple, couple just general comments along those lines. On page 12 of the audit, it, um, talks about, um, the, uh, functions and programs of governmental activities in terms of their expenses. And then what is offset by direct revenues and charges versus what is offset by some sort of tax. And so it basically costs 203.6 million dollars to do what it is that we do. Or that's what it cost last year. Of that, only about 55 million is, is, comes back to us in terms of some sort of direct revenue, you know, user fee or, or some charge to somebody. So that whole remaining amount is what has to be made out in, in some form of taxes. And, uh, later tonight, when we're talking about goals, I know that one of the things that the community is interested in is alternate revenue streams. And I'm just bringing this up here to say, that's a really big gap. You know, I think when people think about alternate revenue streams, they're thinking, you know, we can, we can find a place to, um, significantly reduce our tax burden or, or add some extra programs. But just to give an idea of the enormity of what that is, I think it's good to look at those numbers. And I know I looked at that page differently with that alternate revenue stream concept in mind. So that's, that's one thing. As we're looking at how we did last year, Mr. Farley did mention about our expenses exceeding revenue. Um, we'll also see that our expenses, in many cases, vary from our budget as well. Um, and to the tune of about 2.3 million dollars. And correct me if I have a wrong number somewhere, because, you know, rather be corrected than have my number up there. However, if you look at what our budget was and you compare what that variance was to the original budget, it's about a 1.5% variance within those funds. And, uh, again, if you think about what we did for kids, that means 98.5% of our budget of that 203 million dollars or change, that was, was, uh, shepherded and, and handled, you know, right where we thought it ought to be. Uh, and as, uh, Mr. Farley's pointed out, and Mr. Matheson is well aware, most of that variance in budget comes really at, because of, of benefits, which has to do with the health insurance. Uh, so, uh, in fact, when it comes to the salary portion, as you know, salary portion is our big expense. Salary portion, we were really to the good, I think, if you really look at it. We, we really came in all to the good on the salary portion. So it's really, it's really the health insurance part that, uh, clearly is going to need some attention. Uh, and, and looking at, I think, Mr. Matheson will speak to, you know, maybe some ideas going forward in terms of the finance committee taking a closer look at that kind of thing. Um, and lastly, just taxes, because that's, that's always interesting and revenue from other places. Uh, the state, there's a little pie chart in there that talks about, like, the percentage that comes from the state versus the percentage that, in 2005 versus 2014. But if you actually look what the absolute dollars are in terms of the change there, again, if I've got my numbers right, the state dollars have gone down by 15% in terms of total, total dollars across that time. So no surprise that our local taxes have gone up. Actually, um, Dan, if I've got the numbers correctly, and I just, I just use local taxes, not all of our local revenues, um, by about 38%. You know, some of that includes what the community has said in terms of buildings and, and all of that sort of thing. But clearly, the community is having to make up what the state is, is not providing. So as we're talking about a levy and leaving dollars on the table versus not, as we're talking about Senate Bill 16 and what that could mean to us, and then we realize that, that alternate revenue streams really are not going to be able to totally solve the problem. Uh, and that we're, um, really being affected by some things that are somewhat out of our control, such as healthcare and, um, uh, tuition to outside agencies. I, I think it just gives a, sort of a reality check as to what we're dealing with in terms of our options and such. But, um, that's, those are my general observations. And Mr. Matheson really is the go-to guy for more meat on the bones of that, so.
Okay, just, uh, you know, a couple of other items that I think are critical. I, I can't, I, I, Rosemary mentioned a little bit about the health insurance cost and, and it was clearly the reason we deficits that this year. Uh, if we looked at, I think it was page eight, or page 33, there's a little schedule in there, uh, footnote eight, which, which indicates that the, you know, the current year's claims paid was almost 15 million dollars. Uh, the year before, it was about 12 million dollars. So it's almost 27% higher, uh, 23% higher. And, you know, one of the high products of this information is that we're gonna, the finance committee levels really look closely at, uh, you know, the benefits, the cost of the benefits and so on. You know, we're self-insured, and I've talked about this before, that we bear the risk then of, of, you know, any cost increases. And that, that has, this is a direct reflection of a bad year and being self-insured. I mean, it basically puts it from a positive environment to a negative environment. So I think we're gonna, you know, as part of the, uh, uh, committee, we're gonna look at very closely the, you know, what caused this, look at the history of it, and, and really more significantly, look at alternatives. Uh, you know, is there a, a better alternative than the current type of program we're using right now? Particularly, it is part of the Affordable Care Act and so on. And, uh, you know, we're, we're confronted with some Cadillac plans. This is a year of negotiations. I think it's, it's, this is the time, if there's going to be any modification of those, that we're gonna have to deal with it. So we want to be prepared as a board and, and we're gonna do that research. And, and clearly before, hopefully in the next month or two, we will have some real serious detailed information about this so that we can make some really critical decisions as we move forward, both in future budgets and as well as negotiations. But it, it is a, you know, a very, you know, it clearly changed the whole life of this, this lot, uh, this year's financial information. Uh, you know, a couple of other things, you know, we did overexpend the budget and, uh, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna get a legal opinion on, you know, there's one theory that says, you know, the community, we go through the budget process, we approve the budget, and that budget is basically a limitation of what we can spend. Uh, I've asked the, uh, staff to get a legal opinion to make sure that if we overexpend the budget, we may need to modify the budget before the end of the year so that we have the authority to expend more than the budget. So, you know, that's another issue that we'll be getting opinion on. Let's see what else we have here. You know, uh, you know, again, I don't want to go in that much detail on the health insurance because we'll be talking about that more. Um, you know, on page 38, just to point out another item. Uh, this is, you know, particularly a page, part 10, it talks about early retirement option. And we can see that, you know, in the years, we have a lot of retirement. Uh, you know, we incur a cost in that line and then, you know, as part of the program to, I'll call it incentivize, uh, early retirement. And, you know, I think going down the road, this number, I believe, we anticipate to be quite a bit higher in 2015 or '16 at any rate, because there'll be a lot more, uh, potential retirees. And so that'll be a cost we'll be incurring, uh, you know, currently, it was a pretty low number. You know, logically, early, early retirement option, of course, is to, you know, in effect, a retiring, uh, higher-paid staff would be replaced by a lower-paid staff. So that's why we incur those costs and, and it makes sense. But, uh, you know, it is an issue there. Let's see. Uh, you know, one other thing, you know, and maybe Billy can help me out here. I was looking at, as, as Rosemary is speaking. The, if I look on page, uh, near the back of the report, 83, and I think I, I don't know if I have a final draft of this, but there is an item in there, you know, that shows what I'll call local revenue, state revenue. And then there's an item in there called general state aid. And that's, uh, 6.4, 6.5 million dollars. And this is, I believe, the general and special revenue money and so on.
This is a straight general state aid and poverty grant money, yes.
Okay, so I guess we've been talking about Senate Bill 16 would have an impact on a 10 or a 9 million dollar number. I'm confused a little bit by that.
Sure, Senate Bill 16, what, what it's going to do is, it's basically taking the state general state aid money, the poverty grant portion of the general state aid, as well as most of the categorical money, uh, save the special ed transportation and, uh, I think one of the special ed line item. And there's basically 12 million dollars at risk of the 17 million dollars that we're, we're set to receive. Of that 12 million dollars at risk, uh, they're basically going to reduce it by 10 million dollars. So, uh, that, so our state number goes down, our general state aid number with all those categoricals would go down, uh, to about a little over 2 million dollars of, of that 12 million dollars that's, that's in that 17 total right now, and we call general state aid. It also would cause a reduction in the foundation level as well.
Okay, so to put that, kind of rephrase that, general state aid, I think we, we, we think it's general state aid when we talk about Senate Bill 16. It's really talking about what you referred to, categoricals. Could you just briefly explain categoricals, please?
Sure. Uh, categorical funding is, is state funding, um, what's left now of state funding is really the areas of special ed, uh, reimbursement from the state. Uh, transportation, uh, funding, and, and it's designed to reimburse for specific programs. General state aid is, is what it is, it's general money. It has, uh, uh, you know, it's not a restricted use, whereas categorical is for some certain restricted programs within, uh, the special ed and, and transportation services and things of that nature. So, uh, most of that money is, uh, from the state is really special ed. It's a little bit of illegal, um, the driver's ads, you know, there's a few other small categorical programs left.
Okay, thanks. And then, kind of, the, the final item I want to make reference to is that we talked a little bit about the fund balance policy, where we have a 25% reserve in our, our policy. This year, we ended up at about 28%. While we overexpent it about 1%, 1% of roads into that 28%. So, I mean, you know, we have really, you know, another year of 1% and another year of 1%, and we now violated our, our, our policy. So I, I think we have to really be careful on, on what we do. Um, you know, and it's, you know, the point I'm getting at here is we have, as a district, very limited quote reserve, uh, you know, not that fund balance is reserve, it's the working capital that runs the district. But it is very, uh, we are right at the edge of that. Uh, you know, we're to the point, you know, at, uh, you know, without putting on a, I'm sorry, but we're at the point that we cannot deficit spend. We don't have any room to deficit spend. So, you know, this is really going to be a challenge as we move forward into this coming year with negotiations, everything else, is try to figure out how we're gonna run the business. As well as the fact that we've got state aid. Uh, you know, one other item I'd like to point out is that on behalf payment we talked about, uh, that's 30 million dollars. That's, that's what the state in theory is paying to retirement plans on behalf of District 200, uh, teachers. And that historically has been, or not recently, has been discussed as a push on to the local community as well. So, you know, not only do we have, uh, you know, a 30 million dollar backlog there, uh, you know, that, that item, you know, is gonna, you know, may grow, I don't know, we'll see. You know, that's part of it. But it could become a local tax as well as a, you know, it's possible. Uh, maybe it's uncertain, uh, just as uncertain as, uh, Senate Bill 16 was. So, you know, school districts in gen, okay, are, uh, you know, facing financial crisis in the state of Illinois. Uh, I think, uh, we've recently heard conversation about 62% of schools are, are, are deficit spending. Well, we joined that rank this year. So that's not, not something we want to be doing again next year. So we have to monitor this closely and, um, you know, I think, uh, you know, part of our investigation in the, uh, the finance committee will deal with one, the primary reason that happened this year. And we look forward to that analysis. And that is kind of a summary of our results.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler, Mr. Farley, Mrs. Swanson, and Mr. Matheson. Is there any other discussion on the audit that was, uh, very, you know, thank you for going in such great detail and, and, uh, and giving us your points of view.
I'm just wondering, does staff, um, have any comments or, um, modifications of things that Mr. Matheson or I may have said? So I did want to make sure it's all clear.
One, one thing I just want to clarify, and I think Jimmy may have said this, but it is, uh, be clear, the, the ERL program you referenced, the early retirement program, that is a state program. That's not a local district authorized program through collective bargaining. That's a state program that we have no choice if a person decides to retire, so.
Yeah, my only comment I've had is that we have, you know, a limited revenue and expense source. And as we have a larger number of retirees, the year that happens, we incur a,
Absolutely.
I'm expecting a half million dollar cost in, in next year or two above what we're spending now. So it's a big number.
I'd just add that Jim did get here from Hillside in record time. And, uh, the auditors are the auditors for the Board of Education. And if anybody has any questions, uh, for Jim specifically relative to the audit, he's, uh, obviously here now, um, to answer them.
Having, having heard all the comments that were made in the board table, would you have anything to add, I guess is my question? Yeah, Senator.
No, I, I don't have anything to add to the analysis of the, the financial statements. I, I think that summarizes quite well what we discussed at the finance committee meeting. Um, I'll just add our part to what we actually do as far as the financials. And I, I think it's great that you go through this detailed level discussion as they are, the district's financial statements and you own the financial information. Um, we do have an opinion over the financial statements, and I always like to bring that out. It was an unmodified opinion, so, I mean, uh, you present the statements free material in the statement. I also want to mention, we do also an audit of the federal grants. So it's the, what we call the A133 single audit. Uh, we look at, uh, the, the major programs of the district. Uh, this year, we looked at the Title I grant and the IDWA grant and the special education grant. And, uh, we had no compliance issues with that as well. So that's always very important. Uh, it's not a huge source of, of revenue, as you know, but, uh, percentage-wise, but it's still an important source, the federal source, we take a look at that. Um, I guess the final comment I'll make is we also issued a management letter along with the financial statements. Uh, we discussed that a bit in, uh, in the finance committee meeting. We don't have any new points to bring up. I think from an operational perspective, uh, we feel like the, uh, the district is well-controlled. Uh, and that, you know, both from an internal control or risk management standpoint and from, from an operational standpoint, over the years that we've been doing the audit, you know, the district's worked very hard at, um, working through any of those segregation and duty issues or other types of operational issues to get to the point where you're at. So I think that should be one of the things. Would you happen to answer any other questions?
Any questions from board members?
I guess I have two questions, and I did pose those ahead of time. And then on pages 76 and 77, it's really, I guess our first one has to do with the tax levy versus the amounts collected. And I guess it maybe ties into the next agenda item as well. But I noted that, um, you know, not only do we aspire a certain amount of money that was restricted by PTEL, that we're able to achieve from the, from the county, but we also, there's about a half a million dollar average over the last five years that we don't.
a million dollar average over the last five years that we don't actually collect because the county is not able to collect that. So I'm looking for confirmation, even though we asked for the money, doesn't mean, but we're kind of restricted in two ways and we're not able to assume that. Sure. That, yes, that is a trend, that you don't always collect one hundred percent. The county clerk does put in a one percent, what I call Boston cost, but we have seen a downward trend if you follow, you know, the last four or five years of the audit. You can see what our collection rate was in, in, you know, even in two thousand eleven, it dropped to ninety-nine point three, which, you know, it was a significant reduction over what we were normally seeing as far as that goes. And really, it's unpaid taxes as well as tax objections or assessment objections. As the board knows, we passed a resolution to allow the school district to receive and tax appeals, and mostly, mostly, if not all, are in the commercial realm. We do personal home get involved in that level, and we get notification of claims that are over a hundred thousand dollars in our refund situations, and that's an impact as well.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, from an accounting standpoint, the district has a policy of a one percent allowance on your tax levy. So when we talk from an accounting standpoint, there is a, if you want to call it a cushion built in, we don't recognize that revenue. We basically recognize ninety-nine percent of what's received.
We also, for the purpose of the FPP, the PMA model, we do, we do not obviously budget it a hundred percent or use a hundred percent for the purpose of collection rate as well. We anticipate some of this, you know, kind of projections.
This is actually maximum, actually. I work with some districts that are in the low nineties that went down low when the PEC knocked down.
So the second question is on the next page. I got to seventy-seven pages before I understood enough that I could ask a question. It really has to do with the operating cost per pupil. You know, that's a measure that is used a lot of how, that's how efficient we are. And, you know, we always use about thirteen thousand four hundred kids as our, as the number of students that we have to teach, and so our operating cost measures is really the cost to operate those, that number of kids. But when I see our average daily attendance, which I understand is the highest three in the second of months, but it's a lower, much lower number than I would have anticipated. So this past year was twelve thousand one hundred eighteen students versus actually educated thirteen thousand four hundred. How does that number get so low? And I know that certain districts like Chicago have huge issues with that. I was just surprised that our number was over a thousand students below what we actually saw. How does that number get, how does the number get that low? That's an open-ended question. It's really basically, you know, we, we run our attendance records, and it's calculated through, you know, the best three months. Usually it's September, October, or, you know, August, September, October, and one wild card out there. There's a lot of factors that come into play with attendance. It was a cold year last year, a lot of, you know, illnesses, things of that nature, but that's, you know, that can be a factor.
One other thing, though, that I'll add to that is kindergarten. So you've got to recognize when we do a pupil count, every kindergartner counts as one. For purposes of ADA, when you run a half-day kindergarten program, they're not counted as a, as a full one.
One more factor, it's actually nine-month ADA. That's what the state uses for this calculation. So that's always a little, not a lot, but a little bit lower than your best three months.
I guess my observation is it seems like it artificially inflates what our cost per pupil would be when we compare to other benchmark districts, unless they have the same situation.
Yeah, everyone uses nine-month. It's a state, this is a state fortune, a state part of that.
Well, you know what I was going to say, think about it, we have twenty schools, fifty, so to get to a thousand, that's fifty kids per school. And if you're thinking about how many sections you have in a school, if you're a four-section school and you've got five grade levels, that's twenty sections. So that's, you know, one or two kids out in each classroom per day. That doesn't, you know, that, if you look at it that way, it's really not that.
Kindergarten, I think it's a big thing.
Right, but I'm just saying, without that, it's really, you know...
I think it also excludes special, certain special ed students as well. You know, it's probably at least a hundred students, I think, in this district that are affected by it. If they're not regular classroom students or they're, you know, outsourced to other district, other state agency type, they're, they're excluded from that at the moment. And the other thing too, you mentioned, and I, and I think this is important, and we understand this because we see it in the report card, is that the, this tuition charge is really not really reflective of the efficiency of the district. It's really reflective of where your, what your mix of your staff is. When eighty percent of your costs are teacher salaries, you know, or salaries, let's say that way, when you, when you have, like, a new district, you know, let's say a new district that's growing, they have a much larger staff and a lower amount in the pay scale. So those people are blended in, you know, where we may be a more mature district and have more people at the higher end of the scale. So that, that really is not, you know, that's a, you know, realistically, all that is a calculation if somebody comes into our district that doesn't, you know, that goes to school here and is charged tuition, you know, but to make that an efficiency statement is really, it's not a fair evaluation of the district. I think it gets compared a lot like that, but it's, it's truly nothing more than a mix of your staff.
And then the mix of the staff also takes into account not only how senior they are, but also their level of education, and we have a very highly educated staff as well. We have a, a great repondence of our teachers who have master's degrees, and that raises their, their salaries and provides, you know, high... Any other questions? I'm sorry. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Roman?
Yeah, I have three. I emailed Dr. Schuler his questions. Well, on page seven of the audit, there's a table two, you know, under the expenses of instruction line item, where our instruction cost last year was only one hundred twenty-one point five million, as past year, two thousand thirteen, they were one hundred and thirty-one million, almost a ten million dollar spending. So I asked what accounted for that increase in instruction costs. I understand about six point eight million of that was attributable to our share of the TRS payments we had to account for, but those, those members of the staff are compensated by federal grants. You know, so increasing the amount of TR, of TRS contributions we had to account their behalf this past year by, by state law, that's the amount was increased.
It's an issue of state's percentage of that TRS on behalf. They've gone from twenty percent to thirty-four percent. Thirty-four percent, so that was, you know, nearly a hundred and ninety-nine.
Over which we have no control. And then there was also that one point two million about excess health costs as well. So that was one comment. The second comment addresses the point that Jim Rattler made with respect to deficit finance. We were deficit spending this year in the amount of one point two million dollars. I just want to remind everyone that prior three years, we did have a balanced budget. And, and I'm glad that the finance committee, you know, all of us will keep, keep an eye on this year's expenditure to ensure that, and my office seems that as well, that we don't do that again. But we have had a, a good record of the last three years of meeting our budget and doing very well with respect to that. And I take some solace in the fact that the driver who gets excessive spending of one point two million that's, or exceeded the budget of one, was unexpected cost for health, health care. My staff, some, some serious costs incurred because of illnesses and other physical problems. And in budgeting for a year, we go on past trends, and this was a blip. And so I'm glad that we're going to take a look to see if there's a better way to control that. And then with respect to tuition costs for special ed children that were placed in private facilities, a charge tuition, it was a jump, unexpected jump. Lords of duty, my parents decided, that's where they wanted to send their children. So I took, take some solace in that. And I, again, to kind of follow up on the comments Jimmy made with respect to fund balance, we did pass that policy three years ago, that we would try to maintain at a minimum twenty-five percent fund balance so that we could qualify along with having a balanced budget for the highest financial recognition stats the state offers, in an effort to ensure we would get the lowest interest rate charged to us if we had a large part of money. And we have succeeded in doing that until this year. Yeah, I do want to make sure that we maintain a balanced budget so we don't go down to the twenty-five percent, that's a magic threshold to come out. But the problem, as you all know, is some of our benchmark districts have fund balances that approach a hundred percent. And they have the luxury of, of perhaps having, going over budget for a year without any concern at all about approaching that twenty-five percent. We don't have that here. We are diligent, very diligent. Everyone here at the table, making sure we maintain a balanced budget, that we keep our expenditures within revenues, and being very mindful of our obligation to do that. And I applaud the staff for the diligence in that, and I applaud the members of the board for their diligence in living up to their duty.
Then just off for one quick clarification, and that's that, when we talk about students that are placed out of the district, that's not by parent choice. That's through the IED process, that's been determined as the appropriate placement, so...
Thank you for that clarification.
Are there any other comments, questions that board members have?
Okay, you're done. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for rushing out here, appreciate that.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you, staff, Mr. Farley and your team and everybody, really, who, every, every administrator, every teacher who is so conscious of costs and, and watches every penny that goes through their hands and uses it to the best of their ability for students. I think, given all of the extraordinary expenses we had this year, to come to a place where we only have a one percent essentially difference in our revenues versus expenditures, I think it's pretty darn good. And I agree, we need to strive to keep everything in balance and check, but I can't say that I'm, I'm going to agree with Mr. Roman, I think we've done a Yalman's job of trying to keep everything in order, and I thank the staff, Dr. Schuler and, and Mr. Farley in particular, for handling things so well. On that, if there's no other further comment, Mrs. Senator, you call her, please.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Gav Young?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Atehar?
Yes, motion passes. Our second action item is adoption of the two thousand fourteen levy. Can we get a motion and second on the floor, please, to adopt the tax levy resolutions and certificates?
So, so moved. Second?
Moved by Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mr. Roman. Dr. Schuler, do you have something to tell us?
Mr. Farley's going to do this presentation as well, so...
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. I'm going to run through a brief presentation regarding the two thousand fourteen levy request. Some terms I'd like to share with Board of Education relative to this discussion that will come up over time is how many PTAL or tax caps. Again, that is the limitation from the law that was passed back in nineteen ninety-one that said school districts, or, or to us, we can only levy by the Consumer Price Index or five percent or CPI, whichever is less. Just as a noting, we never hit the five percent marker in twenty-plus years that it's been in place. The CPI is issued, and I'm going to share some reports with the board here, and some graphs that illustrate where we're going right now, but the CPI is an index that comes out on a monthly basis. We update that on a monthly basis and track it. It's a basket of goods. We have seen that gasoline has been the main driver of that CPI figure over time, and that's no different than what I'm anticipating this year. Equalized assessed valuation of the EAV, that's the value, assessed value of the properties within the school district. And there's been, as the economy has changed, there's been some changes, definite changes in the EAV of the school district, and we're going to talk about that. And then finally, the tax rate, which is really driven now by the EAV, and we've got a chart that we'll plug up at as well. Again, I mentioned that the CPI is put out by the Bureau of Labor each month, it's an index and it's comparative to the prior year. We use the December number, so we will find out in the middle of January where our CPI is for the two thousand fourteen year that we will use for the two thousand fifteen levy. As I mentioned, the correlation between the CPI is not always tied into how school districts operate, eighty percent of our business is people. The CPI, again, seems to be driven by the cost of gasoline in recent years. It has had profound impacts. The word CPI was up around four percent in August and dropped to a tenth of a percent by the time it got to December. I think last year, if you recall, I had a picture of a gasoline price up in Rock Island when I was out there visiting my son, when gas was two sixty-nine, and we, we did get the, saw the CPI come down as we got towards the end of the school year. And obviously, if you're feeling your day now, you know, the gas has been coming down again, and we're interested to see how that will impact the CPI. Here's a ten-year history, just shows how the CPI has been up and down. I mentioned the tenth of a percent, I also mentioned that we've never hit five percent, four point one was the highest year, and then followed by the tenth of a percent. And the CPI has, over this ten-year period, has been around a two point four percent average. It's a, a figure we use in our projections for when we, in January, when we do the FPP model for the board with our five-year projections. We do keep an eye on what's happened recently, and it becomes one of our assumptions. We also find out, as I mentioned, in mid-January, and use that number. We'll plug it into the, the model right before we present to the finance committee and the board, so we know that number, and that's, obviously, that timing is for that reason, when that's out. But as you can see, the last two years, we've tracked it at two percent, with this year's CPI being one point five percent. So how will the CPI finish? We, as I mentioned, we, we find out for the prior month about, we'll be finding out the October number here pretty soon, but what I've done in this chart and what it illustrates is as of September, we are tracking at one point seven percent. If that index stays flat over the next three months, we would anticipate a two point one percent CPI. Again, just using an assumption of a static index. However, again, going to the next slide, this is a five-year plot of that index over time, and you can see in most years, one year in September, by the time you get to December, the CPI is actually going down in most cases. This is a chart that illustrates the CPI versus what our actual extension, and really the difference between these two lines, the blue line is the CPI, and the red line is what our actual extension, and the difference is really filled in by the new growth or new construction within the school district. Some of the upcoming charts will show and illustrate the, if you look at two thousand ten, that's the Cantera TIF, when that, when that new growth came on, on the property tax rolls, obviously, it was a significant amount of new construction that came on once that TIF expired. We do track the TIFs that are in the school district, that we don't have any expiring here. The first one that's going to expire coming up will, maybe a tie, but we're keeping on Carroll Street for TIF one that they have, which is where the Dominics used to be, unfortunately, there used to be the Dominics there. So there, that TIF is still active, but there's also three TIFs in downtown Weet, that are set to expire here in the next five to seven years. So we, we'll keep an eye on those in mind for those as they expire. We also have a small TIF in the Del Heights and one in Morenville, and one more in Carroll Street where the new PLOS is as well. Here's a history of our equalized assessed value of the district, and as you can see, as the economy was growing in the mid to late two thousands, the EAV was growing. That obviously had an impact on the tax rate, which I'll talk about here in a minute, but then, as you can see, as the economy started to turn, the actual EAV or the property values within the district started to decline precipitously over the high point right before the economy soured. Here's a chart that indicates the new growth, and we used to be able to set our watch pretty much on thirty million dollars of new growth as the economy was in pretty good shape. Obviously, it started to decline in two thousand nine, two thousand ten was the anomaly of Cantera, where that came on the tax rolls, and then we saw it drop back below what we anticipated, with this as another assumption that we use in our modeling. We've decreased it because of what's happened in the economy. I am happy to report two things relative to EAV and... I am happy to report two things relative to EAV and new growth. Milton Township is one of the three, and the largest of the three townships that make up our school district, with Naperville and Winfield, and the other two in much smaller comparison. Milton Township has indicated that the EAV, based on early estimates, and again, we don't have all the information right now, that the EAV is starting to level off. We're for a quithering of assessment next year of the properties in the school district, so we'll see where that goes. So that means property values are starting to come back. Also, new growth is up as well in the district, so the bottom year of 2013, we're starting to see that number go back up closer to where we were back in the early 2000s, and again, that new growth is a sign of hopefully the economy coming back. One thing, this is a chart we used in the community engagement, thought I'd just resurrect it for this presentation, that the impact of the EAV has on the tax rate in the school district, and really for anyone, any taxing body. You know, when the existing EAV is rising, the tax rate will go down, which is what we saw, you know, from 1991 to 2007, and with the economy, you know, look on the right side of the EAV, it started to decline as it did in our school district, the tax rate started to creep back up again. Again, it's, the drivers of it are really, you know, the economy and what's happening with the EAV, but the tax rate is really now a function of what's happening with the EAV in the school district. When you're flat, they obviously, everything in the middle chart just indicates things stay pretty low. This is a five-year history of our tax rates, and as you can see, the overall tax rate of the school district did increase as the EAV went down. Doesn't mean we were collecting more money, it just meant that the tax rate, tax rates were actually going up. There are some statutory limits, and some school districts started to bump up against those because their EAV was decreasing at a faster rate than our school district. You know, we saw double-digit decreases in some areas, communities where the tax rates were actually going up and hitting those statutory limits, and the school districts were having to find ways to actually collect what they were afforded under the tax cap laws and the CPI, capture the CPI. Again, this is another chart I took from that presentation, it just kind of shows where we are as far as the school district and tax rates with our benchmark school districts, and you can see where our overall tax rate for all funds is second most compared to Barrington. In a breakdown, we talked about our tax levy for the school district. As you'll see, 88% of that tax levy goes to operational taxes, that's the portion that's under the tax cap, the 12% that you see is the, most of the referendum or bottom debt of the school district. And again, we mentioned in the audit presentation that we're gonna be looking at that chart where we have the slow fits coming here in future years, and the Board was, obviously, we talked in a presentation about trying to level that out, and I wanna make sure we just, we can't talk about that enough to keep that on our radar. Interest rates appear to be continuing to stay down relatively low. There is some discussion, maybe a year from now, they may start to see some interest rate creep, but, you know, we've heard that before, so hopefully for our benefit, by the time we get into October 15, we're still in a good place from an interest rate standpoint. But this just indicates how much is operational of the levy and how much of it is debt services. So how much should we receive? You know, our aggregate levy for 2013 was $122.6 million, with that CPI at 1.5%. Our new, our new tax levy would be $124.5 million. I mentioned the new growth, it's usually about 1% on average we see. The initial numbers that we've gotten from, and again, these are initial estimates that are coming from the Assessor's Office, is we're gonna be somewhere in the $25 million range. If you go back to that chart that we looked at before, we were far less than that last year, we were around $14 million in new growth, so every $1 million is an additional $45,000 plus or minus of new funds that will come because of the new growth within the school district. So that will be on top of that $124.5 million, which is the level set by the CPI. So the levy request we're asking for today is to capture $128.750,000, and really, this is, and I wanna be clear, that the amount we are going to receive is that CPI and the new growth number. We levy this amount higher than what we anticipate to receive, just in case there's other anomalies, any other new growth out there that we are unaware of. Because all of these, you know, the new growth numbers are our estimates, and we don't have final figures, we're kind of levying a little bit blind to capture that new growth plus the CPI, so our request is greater than what we anticipate to get, but we wanna make sure we capture everything that is afforded to the school district under the tax cap laws. So our actual levy request is that $128 million. It also indicates what our anticipated bond and interest payment is, and then the overall total levy proposal. In the past, you can see, this indicates, the blue line indicates what we asked for, and the red line is what we actually receive. Always want that red line to be lower than what we propose, and it always is, because we want to be, again, levy enough to make sure we capture what we're afforded under the tax cap laws. So unknowns, and Mr. Matheson mentioned this, that it's also an management letter in the audits, and things coming up that, you know, obviously are a concern for the school district as we move forward, and why accessing the cost of living increases, or CPI for the school district is so important. State funding, obviously, for the last five to 10 years has always been somewhat of a unknown. A lot of decisions are made in May, and by May 31st, sometimes a little bit later. Obviously, there's gonna be some changes, hopefully for the better now in state, but Senate Bill 16 is obviously still on the rise, and as Dr. Schuler mentioned, there's a conversation that's gonna occur on the 20th about it, but that's an unknown, obviously, and as we discussed, there's potentially $10 million at risk to the school district and state funding. The income tax sunset is still out there as well. State has not made their first quarterly payment to the school district. If you recall, last year, they got caught up. They made all four of their payments, actually. A fifth payment was made as well for a prior year, but were made in the prior year. But September, the payment we normally have by the end of September has not arrived yet. The next one is due here in December. Interested to see what's going to happen if that income tax goes sunset. With the backlog of bills already in play, it's gonna be very interesting to see what's going to happen with state funding, how many of those four quarterly category payments we're going to receive. Also mentioned is the state pension cost shift. That's been discussed as part of a potential change to Senate Bill 16. I believe there's a hearing next week, the state pension law. The judge could give some type of ruling on Senate Bill 1 that was passed as far as the state changes to the state pension law, if it's unconstitutional or not. There was an earlier ruling in the, in the Supreme Court on health benefits for retirees that gave some indication that the law may be found unconstitutional, and a lot of belief that will happen. I don't believe there's any constitutionality in shifting the burden to the local school districts on the state pensions, and that may be the next play that we're seeing happen. Also, collective bargaining, and we've talked quite a bit about healthcare costs and the Affordable Care Act and the impact of that. So these are all things that we consider as we talk about this levy, as well as the fact we budgeted for this levy in anticipation of this levy moving forward. So again, our recommendation is that, under the guidance of the property tax caps, that we access the new, or the CPI that is afforded to us at 1.5% and capture a new growth by levying above, you know, 1.5%. Can we answer that rather quickly? If the Board has questions, I'm available.
Any other questions?
Number one, on the, if Senate Bill 16 were to come through and we lose this, give or take $8 to $10 million, do we have the ability to change the amount of tax revenue we generate from community or from household real estate taxes? Is that an opportunity to do that? When you said how we could cover the costs that would be, couldn't be funded by the reduction in Senate Bill 16?
Not without a referendum or a change in law, it would be part of Senate Bill 16, no.
Okay, one other thing, on the, when you talk about the tax rate, you know, if we increase the tax rate as much as you're recommending here, what does it do to the raw dollars that we can get without new growth? In other words, an individual's tax bill is, say, let's call it $5,000 or whatever, what is the most amount, you know, that they would be kind of incurring if this were passed? Can it, I guess my point is, can it exceed the 1.5% assuming there's no change in assessed valuations amongst all pool?
In a $300,000 house, I think of Mr. Gambian, he asked this question, relative to what the taxpayer may see. A $300,000 house, if they're, and again, there's factors in play that drill down to the personal homeowner and what's happening with their home value. If, you know, and with all things being equal, if the EAV of the home mirrors the EAV of the school district, their amount should only go up 1.5% on a $300,000 house, we're talking something in the $60 range. Again, this is for the operating levy, the CPI of tax caps, this doesn't include the debt portion of the bill. So again, it can be a wild card, because most of the calls that I get from the community are folks whose home values have gone up greater than the overall EAV of the school district, and they pay, would pay a greater share. I don't get any calls from the home values that go down, they pay less, but I do get the calls on those, and sometimes exemptions will run out on property tax bills and things of that nature that can have an impact as well. So it's kind of a slippery slope, because really, what you pay as a homeowner, or what we pay, what we all pay as homeowners, is really gonna be someone coming and wanting the property value or the assessment of our home is, and how that mirrors the amount that we'll pay relative to that CPI.
Any other questions, Mrs. Coghill?
When you said that $1 million new construction equals $40,000 to us, Patrick?
It's surprisingly $45,000 per million dollars of new value.
So what am I misunderstanding, that typically, if it's a million-dollar house, their taxes are maybe 25, 30,000, 40,000 would be? And we don't get all of that tax bill, so how do you figure that?
The total amount the school districts is going to receive, you know, it's roughly $2 million more, you know, the difference between that $1.2263 and $1.24, that value is spread across the wealth of the school district, and it varies by individual home based on that collection. So again, I think the wild card that happens in most cases is how homes are assessed. Basically, whatever the homeowner of that million-dollar home, that's probably more an exception, that's why I use the $300,000 example. Their taxes that go towards the school district are in the $4,000 range, and so that 1.5% if their, if their property values stay consistent with the rest of the school district, you know, will go up by that 1.5% or the $65 or whatever that equates to. So obviously, it's different for the value of the home as well, but we use the $300,000 because it's somewhat in the, we start factoring in with different communities that make up the school district.
I think, I think one point of clarification here, this million dollars that you're talking about, that's not the actual home cost, that's the equalized assessed valuation, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so that's, I think, may explain the difference. So you're looking at a $3 million house, like you say, and that would generate $45,000. So essentially, when you say we're going to get, or we're anticipating $25 million in new growth, that means market value of maybe 75 million. Is that?
Seventy-five.
Twenty-five million, seventy-five million.
Yeah, property value is assessed at 33.3%.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Do you have a follow-up, Mrs. Coghill?
No, it's just a conversation, you know, I hear all the time, like, and the report Milton Township got killed, and people coming in, if my taxes are going up, or why are my values going down, why are my taxes going down? And because we have bills to pay, and so you gotta raise the rate. It's just that they are going up as well, it depends on where, and taxes are so, I'm glad we have Patrick in the question.
It's a problem, Mr. Roman?
Just for the record, Mr. Farley, the budget we approved in September assumed that we would enact this levy, is that correct?
Any other comments or? Any other comments or questions? Okay, then I think we may be ready to take a vote, so Mrs. Sander, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Gavion?
No.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Interhart?
Yes, motion passes.
I am sorry, Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
I do have a little string to vote.
Mrs. Interhart, may I, just, yeah, we'll break from the edge, I just wanted a follow-up question on, okay. Mr. Gambian, I have to ask you, you, we voted on the budget, and I know that at the time there was some discussion about the budget, assuming the levy, and we all went around the table and said, yep, we're good with that, and I believe you voted yes on the budget. So I guess I'm needing a little more clarification on your vote. I'm not really trying to put you on the spot, but I realize that is what I'm doing.
It's a fair question. I continue to struggle with, I did vote yes for the budget, and obviously, supported that in all respects. However, on the levy issue, even though that was anticipated and put in the budget, I still struggle with a policy that allows us as a Board, albeit the policy allows it, to, as I call it, tax to the max, and I just think we have to be more sensitive to that issue and capturing as much as we can, in my opinion, can be, should be offset possibly by some other expense items on the budget. So though I did vote for the budget, I did approve that with you all, when it comes to the levy, albeit it was within that budget situation, I still have to decline to support that policy.
And I respect that, I understand that struggle, and I mean, even when I was talking about the audit and the amount that our local taxes have gone up, I mean, it's very understandable. We're kind of the little engine that could here in terms of having to generate our own revenue, and so there is a great burden on our local taxpayers, and so I really get that, but how would we then achieve this budget if everybody voted yes for the budget and no for the levy? I mean, how, because presumably, if you're voting no, you would like to have everyone else agree with your opinion, so how would that happen?
Well, I don't know if everybody has to agree with my opinion, but there are many dynamics within that budget that I believe, there's gonna be some other items coming up relative to expense items that I believe may be compromised on or may have to be changed on, whether it's collective bargaining or things of that nature. So while I agreed with the budget because it was balanced, again, I'm back to where I am today, there have to be, we still have to take hard looks at that. There have to be, we still have to take hard looks at our expense items. And I still believe that trying to recapture as much as we can is just a policy I can't support. So, if there's a disconnect, I respect that. But again, I've been consistent with my vote when it comes to the levy and hence the reason for my no vote tonight.
Point of clarification. I just want to state for the record that with respect to the collective bargaining agreement, it's the existing collective bargaining agreement that's appropriated in this budget. It's not the one that's going to be negotiated this coming spring. And I would encourage suggestions in the future about where we might be able to cut expenses. I think we've all reviewed this budget pretty carefully. We wanted to meet the goals that we heard during community engagement about maintaining student achievement and avoiding and addressing trends that have been identified by some of our comments tonight, which I think we're doing well, particularly when we look at the number of percentage of EAV students we have in our district and the poverty level based students in our district compared to our benchmark districts. But be that as it may, I would appreciate perhaps in the future, when we discuss future budgets, some substantive suggestions about where we might cut expenses.
I'd like to comment briefly on this discussion. Number one, I think the vote has been taken. Mr. Gambiani expressed his opinion. There may be a time in the future that any one of us will know on something. And I don't think this is the forum to question that vote. That's his opportunity to vote. As far as cost cutting, first off, this budget, 50% of it is going to be used to fund operations next year. If you want to talk about cost cutting, I can give you a list. And we're starting an investigation in the Finance Committee as we speak. Okay, we talked about the thing that caused our deficit spending this year. And that is a very significant area that has to be investigated. So, if I'm voting on this same budget next year, I may vote no on that levy as well. So, I think, first of all, I don't think this discussion is appropriate at this point. Our vote is done. If we want to talk about it more, that's fine. But I don't think that it's appropriate to challenge anyone. That's their right to vote yes or no.
I respectfully disagree with that position.
You know, and I think we have to have a healthy discussion at the board table and that's why I allowed Mrs. Swanson to break from the discussion. And I really think, you know, we have the right to question each other. We should question each other. We should problem solve together as a board. And the best boards are the problem solving boards. And I would welcome, and I think this is probably symptomatic of a lot of units of government, including our Senate and Congress right now, is that instead of working to compromise and working to come to agreement, they just agree to disagree and they have their no's and yes votes. And I respect everybody's right to do that. But I do think there are times when we need to have a healthy discussion about how we can alleviate and how we can, those situations in the future, and how we could come to consensus for the good of our district. So, I respect everybody's opinion. I thank you for this discussion, whether you're on, whatever side you're on. And I'm happy to have entertained this. As unpleasant as it may seem, as uncomfortable as it may seem, I think sometimes discussions of this nature just have to occur.
And just thank you for saying that because I really, my goal was not to challenge you and I hope you know that. But it just, as you say, it's a logic check and I would hope somebody would check my logic because, believe me, I need it. So, you know, that's it.
And I think we've been successful as a board because we have called each other on things. And I think nobody should feel as though we're, you know, being unduly harmful or doing it in a nasty or mean way. I think it's a very, like I said, problem solving activity that we should do. Okay, moving on. Our next item on the agenda is the adoption of the Vision 2018 Plan, the 2014-15 Board Goals and Assignment of Board Committees. Is there a motion to adopt the plan, the goals, and assignment of board committees?
So, vote.
Will Mr.... Mrs. Cockham? Second, Mr. Roman. I would anticipate we're going to have discussion on this from some of the questions I've seen come through. Dr. Fu, would you like to kick off a discussion?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, there were four items included in the board packet on the Vision 2018 Plan and the goals. So, at the last meeting, the whole meeting, the board will remember that we reviewed a chart that the senior leadership team had collaborated on bringing together. Really, that chart represented a number of different documents that have really fed input into what our priorities should be as a school district, including the Engage 200 feedback that came last year, a number of existing board goals, as well as my superintendent goals that the board had tasked me with in the contract when I started. And so, we pulled that information together really into one visual that we tagged the Vision 2018 Plan. Really, with the goal of having a look beyond just one year at what it is that we want to accomplish for the school district. The areas of priority really were categorized by five broad commitments to the community that encompassed the areas of student learning, community engagement, facilities, finance, and support systems. And from that discussion at the last meeting, the board identified four areas in particular that you really prioritize that wanting to see developed into goals for this year. And so, just a couple of things before we slide into the goals that I want to mention. There's a lot of work that's taking place in the district between, since you look at all of our areas and the work that we're doing, it's not going to be encapsulated in four goals. So, there's a lot on this chart that is already in progress. It's being worked on. We're making meaningful progress. But certainly, the four areas that the board pulled out to prioritize for this year are very consistent with areas of priority that the administrative team has as well for the district. And those included two areas under student learning. One, having to do with instruction and use of technology. The second having to do with professional development. I think two areas we heard loud and clear that the board was interested in moving forward. Under the area of finance, there was an interest in focusing on alternate sources of revenue. And then, under the facilities plan, there was an interest in seeing that master facility plan get updated, some priorities in the immediate identified as well as the needs at Jefferson being tied into that. And so, between that last meeting and tonight, what you'll see is that the administrative team has developed each of those four areas into a goal area. What we've identified with that goal area certainly is the strategic focus. So, that refers back to the area on the chart where that goal was fed from, what our overall commitment is within that area to the community, the rationale for why that's important, and then what the indicators of accomplishment would be in having met that goal. And then, in the chart that follows, you'll see a timeline, the specific steps that we intend to take and the resources needed for that action. My intent tonight is not to walk you through each of these four goal areas because I do know you had that information and had an opportunity to review it. But I certainly will answer, you know, specific questions that you might have. I think Mrs. Swanson had asked one question that I do just want to comment on because I did reflect on it a little bit more after the question. And that is the connection of the goals that you've set for me through my contract to this. And as I went back and I reviewed it, there is not a goal area you identified for me that is not represented on this chart. I think the four areas that the board had identified, if I can find them in the back here, were to improve college and career readiness of students by showing measurable student achievement gains over time, the successful implementation of common core, social-emotional learning and professional learning communities. Set a goal in the area of technology, looking at both the infrastructure and reliability to match the needs we have for it, developing training and mentoring opportunities that deepen professional leadership talents of teachers and administrators, a finance goal related to presenting and implementing balanced budgets, and then a community engagement goal. So, I think every goal that truly you identified for me is represented through this goal plan. And I think certainly will get developed as we get to a number of those objectives in the next couple of years. So, with that said, I'll answer questions, take feedback. Who wants to start?
I was the most vocal last week, so I guess I deserve this one. First off, I think you did a great job of taking our comments at the last meeting and putting those forward into the four goals, so the four we outlined. I think there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about the Vision 2018 statement. And I think we had some public comments and I'm trying to, are talking about the creation of measurable goals. And I just want to reiterate, you know, when I look at the Vision 2018 statement, I don't see specific goal statements. I think that's intentional. So, we talk about the five areas and the commitment we have to make to achieve those five areas. And then, there's just all these "we-wills" below it, which identify the things we need to do in order to accomplish the commitment within that category. What we did at the last meeting was to identify those "we-will" statements that are necessary. We need to pull those out and create a goal for this year to accomplish that. So, I think sometimes we can look at this Vision 2018 statement and say that there's no goals in this, these two statements. That's intentional. And so, as we roll through these four objectives over the next year, we'll accomplish those and then we'll have to go back and look at the "we-will" statements and then figure out what the next goals are for the next school year. That's the way I interpret this document I took out of the conversation last time, which was a challenging conversation last week. Am I interpreting the intent of this Vision 2018 statement and then what we're going to do with those four individual documents? Is that my interpretation correct?
Yeah, I guess I do think so in that. And I guess one other thing I want to mention, I think, some question as well. I think over time, as we address, as we prioritize and address the areas that you see on that chart, one of the reasons that it actually was important to me to have the goal statements written in a format that I think kind of coordinates to that Vision 2018 document is that at the end of a four-year span, let's say we get to 2018, I think Mr. Matheson had asked a question last time about what will be the legacy of this board. And I think as we work through these statements, develop them into more detailed goal plan as you prioritize them, I think you're going to have the ability to have a collection of goal outcomes that will in fact show the legacy of this board. If you've addressed all of the areas on here and put in place measurable indicators that show you've accomplished them, then yes, I do think that. The one question I do, or one other thing I do want to mention, though, is that I do think within the area of student learning, one of the interests of the board has been in developing a dashboard in the area of student learning. And I think that's very, very important to do in that area in particular. I think we need to work on developing a dashboard that can get monitored and measured over time. You might remember when Mrs. Stalkus did the presentation at the meeting on student achievement. That was one of the questions we asked at the end is, with a number of the unknowns in terms of testing, what do we want that dashboard to look like? What do we want to measure and want to measure over time? And I think that's something that needs to be developed. Unfortunately, we can't develop that right now. There are just too many unknowns in the assessment system that candidly to develop, you know, a set of, you know, five or six achievement indicators, I think we're going to be a little bit premature to do that until we get a little bit of the data that we can work into that. So, I do think that, you know, for a number of people that I think are looking for those tangible measures, it's not here within this document, but I think needs to be developed, especially in the area of student learning. Just, we're not in a place where we can do that right now.
Is everybody comfortable with that? Because I want to make sure we're... I know this has been something that Mr. Matheson has talked about and it's certainly of a concern to me. But we always seem to be with the flux and what's going on in terms of our assessments, our state assessments especially. We've been in a situation where the tests change, the rubric changes, the cut scores change, everything changes, and it's hard for us to really measure and come up with, ahead of time at least, an indicator of success. Now, I think if, you know, if you want to have a discussion about what some possibilities might be, we could do that, whatever your pleasure is to discuss that. But I think we do have to, you know, give the staff a little time, a little latitude on those measurements, you know, if it's something you think you want to consider.
I like the idea of measurement, as we've discussed in the past. And I thought one of the best things I heard tonight was when, in the public comments about the ACT scores, followed by the statement in the superintendent's report that we are investigating those and we are trying to determine why that happened. I mean, those are what I look for in goal measurement. And I'm very glad to see that that data is already in the works and that presentation is appropriately ready to be addressed or being investigated or addressed. That, I think, is the whole idea of objective goals, is to look at it, say something happened that didn't happen the way we wanted it to, and then react to it. And that's what I've heard tonight and I'm very happy about that.
I think, the question remains, do we know yet if the state is going to go to PARC testing or ACT or, you know, are we going to have the ACT as part of our testing of our 11th graders in the future?
We're going to have ACT this year. Can't tell you beyond this year if the state is going to fund ACT or not for all students. PARC as of right now, PARC is here. It's our assessment system for this year. What PARC will look like a year out, you know, I don't know it. But again, I guess as, you know, as I think the board, especially the board with your Teaching and Learning Committee, I think that's a perfect topic for that committee to spend some time looking at in terms of what does that dashboard look like? In my view, I think if you identify some measures that you want to monitor over time, that dashboard helps you to know if the strategies we're focused on are in fact the right strategies. If the strategies are right, you will see upward movement in the dashboard, right, that you're monitoring. Exactly what that's going to look like, I mean, candidly, I would be hesitant to see you focus only on measures, you know, goals tied to a single point in measure or a single test form. But I think if you identify a set of metrics that you want to monitor every year so that you can look at, are they pointed up or they pointed down or are they pointed, you know, neutral, I think as a board, that's your temperature check year over year as to whether the strategies we're focused on are making a difference in achievement the way you want to. Just like the metrics you monitor in finance tell you if we're doing the right things in the way that we're allocating resources and spending money.
One other thing I might want to mention in relation to this is, you know, I also sit as a board member on the Social Emotional Learning Committee. And at one of our middle schools, particularly Franklin, some measures were put into place. Early this year, they really took the bull by the horns and put some social-emotional learning procedures and strategies into place. And they have started to measure from year to year now their incident reports, their detentions, their suspensions. And they've noticed through that, through the measures, that they're improving. There have been fewer referrals to the deans. There have been, you know, a lot less in terms of discipline issues. So, I think we can come to measurements in all of our different areas of concern, including social-emotional learning. It's part of our... Because if kids are doing well socially and emotionally, then typically you should see learning increase as well. But, you know, I think if we take that to committee, we can come up with some good valid measures and then we can present to the board for approval in terms of a dashboard and go on from there. I know it feels like we've been struggling with this ever since we've been on the board. and before, but it's one of those things that I think because of the measures keep changing, it's very difficult for us to wrap our arms around.
I think your, you know, your comments are good, and I think that we sell our community. When people decide where they're going to live, they're going to live in this community or that community. So we always have, and we do it constantly, is, you know, compare ourselves to our, what's the proper term?
Benchmark.
Benchmark district. So I think, you know, if nothing else, if next year we don't have ACTs, we have benchmark districts. So there's always a unit of measure. My world is, all comes down to numbers, so, you know, this is the way I am. But, you know, the point is that I think, you know, we're going to be, we have to sell our community, and our community has to achieve. And again, you know, the best thing I heard again today was we reacted to what we had in our benchmark district. And that's all we can ask for, and to try and solve that problem. So, please.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I'm kind of understanding here, and make sure we're all understanding. So I heard Mr. Paulson say that these obviously do not have specific, maybe, they have indicators on them, but not indicators in the sense of what has been discussed, you know, that achievement's going to move up by X number of points, or fund balance is going to increase by X number of dollars, or we're going to have X more iPads in our district than before. I know those are things that people can understand, but that's not what's on here, obviously. But your contract has provisions under each of those categories that you mentioned that said, within the first hundred days, some indicators will be set to, then that, those indicators will be what you'll be measured by at the end of each year as to how well are you doing. So how do we get from here, these statements, to the indicators that make sense with these statements? That's, what's that process going to look like?
Yeah, and I think that, I think that you have it. So in my view, the indicators that you have with each goal indicate, what is it going to look like if that particular goal or strategy is accomplished? Do they, they don't all boil down to a, an individual unit of measure? Some of them are process-oriented outcomes, but I do think your indicators are tied to it. And again, I guess in pointing you back to, you know, especially in the contract goals, some of those are not goals that you're going to be able to measure through a single numeric measure when you talk about community engagement, or you talk about, is technology working? Some of them are going to be, you know, process indicators that show you progress toward, you know, the strategies that we've identified to get there. So I do, I think it's there, I guess, in my view, you, so you've prioritized four areas, I would assume, as a board of education, that you will want a couple of checkpoints as to how we're doing and accomplishing the things that we've said we are going to accomplish, and the impact of that. And I think that's how you're going to get to that question. I guess what I was pointing out is in one area in particular, that being student learning, I think there's a dashboard that can be developed that gives you a little different numeric look at a, at a set of indicators. But I think, you know, again, outside of finance, I think in other areas, I'm not sure there's going to be an numeric dashboard that's going to measure that. I think it's going to be accomplished through, you know, completion of the steps that are taken to address that area.
So will there be some rewriting of the contract language to put these indicators in place, or, that's the part, I'm just not quite clear what the next step is to make sure that, the whole point of this exercise is to make sure that we're all, we're focusing on focused items, and we're not spread about 33 different, you know, goals in different places. So we've got these, we've got your contract goals, will there be some reworking of that language that's needed, do you think, in the contract, in order to make sure that there are things in the contract that we haven't asked you to focus on here? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do understand what you're saying, and I guess, you know, to some degree, that's going to have to be something that the board is going to give me a little bit of feedback on. So the areas you identified in the contract that you wanted me to focus on are right here. I think the contract language had also said, within a period of 120 days, the indicators of what that's going to look like, so what is it going to look like to ensure that we've got an appropriate technology infrastructure meeting the needs of the school district have to be identified? If the detail that's in the goal plan, if achieved, is not enough of an indicator, then you've got to give me that feedback indicating that that's not enough of an indicator, or you want something more, you want something different. So I don't, I guess, so as I'm not sure that I can answer that question for you, I think this is the, I think, the first shot at attempting to develop that for you. But if this is not going to meet the, kind of, the indicator need, then you've got to tell me there's something else you're looking for as a board.
In the past, we've had a couple of board members sit down, typically in May, about the end of the year, and draft goals for the district in the secret time. And then, over a period of time, we find to, see what the drafts could come back, we're raising for the come up on the final product, typically in late June or sort of by July. Of course, that timeframe, when my boards is past here. But what it sounds like, if I'm hearing correctly, what we could do is to take the goal sheets that have been circulated tonight, compare them to the goal, drafted goals that are attached to the contract, and see if we can come up with consistent language in the goals that are attached to the contract that are consistent with the goals here, and to extend that some metrics need to be added, to add, does that sound like a plan?
Yeah, or what we can do, I like that idea, because I think that will close the loop and provide some clarity on all this. Because, you know, I think that's what we're struggling with, is, and even if we can't come up with indicators throughout that, then at least we can put in language that says the indicators to support this will be developed within the learning and teaching community, or within the finance committee, or within the technology staff or committee that is looking at technology. So maybe that's a good, a good way to go with this, so that we can at least have a, I think this document is excellent for staff to have and for us to see as a vision, but I think for the goals, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, that this, something like this might be difficult to administer in terms of, you know, reviewing performance and, you know, it just in a nutshell.
Well, can I ask you a question, and I guess a little bit of a different way? So you identified four areas in the last conversation, and you said we really, here's what we want to focus on. One of those areas, you know, being technology, so to focus on the implementation of technology. Does that mean something as a board to you that's different than what was developed in the goal plan in terms of what you want to see happen? Because, and I guess, let me tell you why I'm asking the question, that, and from my perspective, the most important question you need to answer is what do you want to accomplish for the school district? And if what you want to accomplish for the school district matches what's in this goal plan, then correlating that to my performance evaluation, shouldn't be difficult? I wouldn't try to use my performance review as sort of the measure by which you're going to drive progress in the district, let this be your area of focus, and then we can have a conversation about, does that marry well with the goals you wrote for me with, you know, again, at the point in time in which you drafted that contract? You don't have what you have now in terms of knowledge about what the goals might look like. So I, you know, I guess from my perspective, focus on this first, if this, you know, if accomplishing these things would address what the board has established in a priority in the way of work in facilities, technology, professional development, and the finance piece. Let's work through that first before you think about trying to work this just to make it fit into my evaluation. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me. I'm totally comfortable with, you know, I like things plain and simple, and to me, it's spelled out, and if you accomplish all this, we're going to be, you know, we're going to have the whole school district here. I think the, you know, how the whole measurement thing, because some of it, I think it almost feels like we need to take this, because it is an all-test board, and so it's going to be, do the teachers think that from this professional development, or this special time, they implemented it, and now their kids are understanding at a quicker pace than they did last year? I mean, some, it's, it's really hard to measure, I would think. It's going to take years to see it go down the line here. I love, if teachers, you know, the whole sharing thing in the professional development, and if they say, I tried this, this, work, if we had that, was it at the highest level? I mean, then you got the best of the best doing the best, and we absolutely will see results from it. So, I mean, I think we have been so analytical in the past and all this, but, you know, just get down to the nuts and bolts, and, I mean, I'll be happy.
I think that we have a great opportunity to not reinvent the wheel here. I was just looking at the programs that are going to be in next weekend's training session with the school board association. And I saw two, real quick review here of two programs that are directly related to this. One is superintendent's evaluation, it's a team effort, goes on to describe it. Another one is curriculum leadership, SCCS and PAA, PARCC, whatever all that means, or practices, I know. But my point is that, you know, I think, again, we're sitting here talking and reinventing wheels, and I believe that we have the opportunity, and the reason we go down there, I hope that we look at this, and I would actually request the president to kind of make sure we have assigned things here a little bit of who are, for the people going, we get coverage on these topics, so that we come back and not try and invent the wheel, and see if we can gain some insight. You know, that's the reason we go to these programs, and I think it's an opportunity to address it. And, you know, I feel comfortable with this, and I'm not sure I can even sit here and determine what a goal is right now that we can measure. You know, but I'll tell you, a year from now, if our ACTs or our comparable scores to other districts are two points less, I'm not going to be happy. Okay? And if they're two point better, you're going to be happy, so, and I'll be happy too, you know. So my point is that, I don't know that it's all, it can't, it maybe is a moving target, and, you know, it's something that we might not be able to find out. And we, you know, at the end of the day, we stand back and say, is this a good year or not? And I think that's what this provides me, gives me a direction, you know, this may give me some insight, you know, these training programs. So, you know, let's take the opportunity to do that, maybe address this a little further. But I think, again, it's, it's just the, you know, we can talk about this forever and never come up with what I call tangible factual goals, so.
And Jim, we're not talking about reinventing the wheel, all we're talking about making sure what is attached to Jeff's contract goals are consistent with what's here. And when we come to evaluate Jeff, we can have some legitimate hands-on basis to determine what's been accomplished according to his performance, and that's all, of course, to make these consistent. And I think that's, and I agree with you, we should have somebody attend those two sessions, and one of those sessions doesn't conflict with my panel, especially when we have the epic, we have one in the second. But, but we're not trying to, at all, talking about reinventing the wheel.
And I think, see, I wasn't at the committee the whole week, but I did watch it. And watching it as an observer, I had the distinct impression that everybody walked away with their own unique idea as to what was said in that discussion. And that, and Dr. Schuler has done a great job of pulling together everybody's thoughts here. And so what I want to make sure is that when it comes time for Dr. Schuler to be evaluated, and believe me, I am not trying to run the future of the district in evaluation, but there is a fairness that needs to happen, and I want to make sure that we're all working on the same assumptions. So, and that's not something that should be done here at this table. I'm really asking for, like, what's the process to make sure we all have that same assumption? Because as an example, if you're saying, well, I can't come up with a measurement, but two years from now, if the ACT isn't good, I'm not going to be happy, well, he needs to know that. And on the other hand, if it's more like Joanne says, well, you know, I just want to make sure there's enough iPads in the district, and then he needs to know that. So that's my point, is it's, we need to just kind of make sure that we're all kind of on the same page in terms of the expectations. I think we need to answer his basic question first, which is, as we're looking at these, do these documents reflect what was talked about at the committee of the hall, and reflect where the district, we want the district to go? I think that's your basic number one question that needs to be answered. Then once that gets answered, we can talk about maybe that second part. So I'll just put this on the table and say, yeah, I'm fine with this. And it sounds like you're fine with this, so, I mean...
One thing though, I would like to mention, and I think maybe this is part of our struggle, is that in prior years, at least in the most recent past, we've tried to have goals, we've tried to have a way to evaluate our success as a district in a comprehensive way every year. So what we tried to do is set goals for the district that really revolved around, or that encompassed the job that we have to do. So this is very foreign to us to pull out four areas and focus only on those. It's very, because our goals have been broadened, our goals have been, we've always had the tasks underneath the goals, or the milestones. We've tried to identify things, and we expect you to accomplish it all in one year, so we have the milestones. So to take all of that, I think that's why we're struggling, is that we're feeling that we don't have a level of concreteness and of complexity or wholeness that we had before by pulling out the four areas and just focusing on those. So, you know, and I guess what Mrs. Swanson, I think, is articulating is a little bit of that uneasiness, and also, you know, my other kind of concern that's coming from within me is, let's say you do a backup job on everything except, you know, one of the four areas of focus, you know, well, we want to evaluate you and the district, and we want to be evaluated on the entire job we did that year. We as a board want to be evaluated, evaluate ourselves on the entire job we did that year. So I think that's a part of my struggle, is that, is that I want to make sure that, you know, if, where your things happen and support systems, that you and your staff and we as a board get credit for that and recognition for that. So I think that's, you know, it's a little different for us, and I think it's why, part of that reason is why we're struggling. So having said that, maybe we should move on and go through those four focus areas, go through those documents and ask for comments and give you feedback on those, and then maybe put together a writing committee then to sit down and see if we can, a couple of board members could work with you then on coming up with some goal statements that would reflect. members could work with you then on coming up with some goal statements that would reflect. And a lot of that information might even be already in there, in those four areas. I don't know, am I understanding the wishes of the board? No? Okay.
I think I have it.
The sense I'm getting is that we're, many of us are fine with what's been presented here. And we're willing to adopt that as kind of goals consistent with division plan. But the next step would be, after giving me the way of mind, exactly as board, a couple of board members would sit down and make sure that the goals that are attached to Jeff's contract are consistent with their, and that are stated in such a way that when it comes time to evaluation, we can do a fair and full complete evaluation.
And, but that's kind of where I wanted to go, is kind of explaining, I think, why I'm a little uncomfortable with that, because what we're used to.
All right, so should we do that then? Should we go through those four? And do you have any comments? And what about sir?
I think we're already there. I, you know, I'm ready to vote on this, and I think we then need to develop some specifics in a separate, distinct event. You know, this is what I believe is the modification of what we discussed last time. It gives us direction, it does what its objective is, and, you know, it's a fluid document, I guess, if you make point. And, you know, some of these specifics toward, and I don't want to spend my life writing this, it's really, it's, you know, and so I think what I wanted to say, that let's, you know, deal with the contractual parts later, and, you know, those will get more specific, but these are the general directions. So I'm willing to vote on this as the action plan is called for.
I just have one question on the district facilities footprint or document. What's the value on the timeline? Why are we going all the way back to May 2011? All the other documents start in current timeline? I mean, we're going back for three years of old information. I don't see any value in that. I think we just need to get the baseline started into July or the new school year 2014, which is consistent with the other documents. I mean, it's old news and history, so I'm just saying, if we got a new vision, you're the new guy in the seat, let's start with a date that's beginning your tenure.
Yeah, that's certainly fine. We can pull the, some of the history off of that document. I think part of that was just to connect what's been done to where we're going moving forward, it was a little bit of context, but absolutely, we can pull some of the history off.
So, just a quick question. So as we approve these four vision, what are they called? Vision blueprints? I'm assuming that at the committee levels, we work on this, that these are going to be dynamic documents that they work through the details and changes timelines and changes wording. That's going to be a continuous process?
I would absolutely assume so. Again, I think a lot of the monitoring work that we're going to be doing here is going to happen through committee, and absolutely, if, you know, this is a best guess to a timeline, but you're right, when you look into some of the facility stuff as we dig into it, if something needs to shift within that timeline, I would certainly hope we got the flexibility and agility to do so.
And I would envision that as the committees address these blueprints, that if it turns out that the timeline doesn't need adjustment or some task needs to be adjusted, that will be understood at the time it comes time to evaluate Jeff's performance, I think, in the year. So, although, and they'll be a record, just to justify the adjustment. Other questions?
Well, I need to, I have some comments really I'd like to make on the blueprints. And I don't know how this is accounted for in the blueprints, but, you know, typically when we're looking at the role of the district and the role of the staff, you know, we incorporate all the staff, and I, when you have accountability, how do you account for the accountability of the buildings in achieving the four goals that are represented? You know, and when I look at, you know, whose responsibility it is, I see a couple people's names, but I don't see, you know, what's going on in the building. So how will these, how will the buildings participate in achieving these goals?
And good questions can vary a little bit depending on the area, certainly in the student achievement area actively. I mean, there are the strategies that are identified are going to involve building staff and working on that. I guess the one other thing that I want to mention is that, really, as we've identified the strategies and priorities, it's been with the entire administrative staff involved in the discussion around this. So I do believe there's a joint level of commitment to accomplishment, and I don't think, I think if you dug a layer deeper, like Mr. Bacon talked a little bit earlier tonight about the work that they're doing within Sandberg, and I think you would see it very aligned to the district's strategies.
Okay. That didn't, that wasn't apparent to you, so thank you for explaining that, because, you know, when I saw, you know, a name or two and that, you know, it became a little bit alarming, I wanted to make sure that the accountability was there for everybody in the entire district. The other question I had, I really had to do more with the exploring alternative revenue sources. A couple of things, we talked about, and I know Mrs. Swanson had brought this up in one of her earlier questions, grants. You know, I don't know when the last time was we had a report on all the grants that we've applied for and gotten, and, you know, I know we have somebody on staff who was given time in her schedule to specifically go out and get grants. And I don't see that in this plan, and I was wondering how we're going to, or if that's a part of the equation that I'm just not seeing, do we have people doing that kind of work? How is that being handled?
Yeah, so I guess in the plan, I think it's accounted for in the third bullet, where it identifies to work with all departments to promote investigative assistance in successful award of grants.
Right, but I see, I see Mr., is Mr. Farley taking on that task, and I see Mr. Farley and Mrs. Loyacan help.
Right, so again, I think the lack of clarity, which, let me try to figure out a way that I can bring clarity to this, is that's representing who ultimately is owning the entire commitment. It doesn't mean that's the only person working under the strategies, and I think maybe the disconnect that we need to try to clarify for you in some ways to indicate who else is involved in making the work happen, which goes a lot deeper than just Mr. Farley if he's the community owner. That help, I think, if we spell out some of the other folks that are maybe involved in making the work happen, it would help.
Yeah, that would help, and if, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if we need to provide you with resources to hire somebody to write grants, then we need to know that, and that needs to be part of this plan. If you have those resources already, I'm not aware of that. So that's, I guess, where I'm headed with that question. Because the way I look at it, there's a lot on the community engagement plate, and that's, having just gone through that process, we have a lot of commitment there that we need to honor, and when I see, you know, just those two names, I know Mr. Farley has his plate full, and...
I know, Ken, I'm putting you on the spot, but these are thoughts that are coming as I thought.
I have a reaction to that question. I mean, number one, when I look at this and I, from what we're seeing, there's only one owner of this, and that's Dr. Jeff Schuler. And, you know, I know, you know, I'm not going to go to Bill Farley or Erica and so on, but, you know, that's not who we work with. So, you know, realistically, and we own all of that, we have to support it all. So, you know, that part of the document, to me, doesn't say much, you know? It's not telling you anything, you know, because we, as a board, we as a superintendent under his direction and decision-making, will make all these decisions, you know? So, you know, the identification of other people, the answer will be wrong, so that's just...
One other question I had, and then this is my final question, is, as I was meeting with teacher groups and all that, that question came up about support for our young teachers and mentoring kinds of things. And I know I talked to you a little about today, you said, "Well, why don't we talk about that maybe tonight at the board table?" The question to bring up, have you given any thought to developing some sort of program to take our teachers who are new and faced with all the common core challenges that all the rest of our veteran teachers are struggling with, you know, to help them get going and use their skills?
I think it's a, I think it's a good question, and I guess I might answer it tonight by saying, I think we could get a little bit of thought to maybe how examining the current state of the mentoring program fits into the professional development goal. That's probably as detailed an answer as I could give to you tonight on it.
Since we're also approving committee assignments as part of this action item, I'm wondering if four blueprints on the left column should not just identify departments, but the board committee assignment as part of this? Because there's really nothing, this is all administration level, so if we're approving these as board action items or goals for this year, should the board committee sign them regardless?
Sure.
Yeah, that, thank you. That's a great suggestion for any of you. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, and should I go through that now?
I want to hear someone with a question. And Jeff, when did you start? September 1st?
Second.
Second. So, and what are we now, at October 1st? So you've got two months to be kind of get used to this. So I think we're asking some really detailed questions, a little early in the process to begin. So I think, again, you know, it's still, you know, I think, you know, had you been here two years or a year, you know, I think a lot of these questions would be more appropriate, and I think we're, you know, we're firing some wrong questions right now, I believe. So, I think, again, our idea's correct and so on, but now you know the accountability that you're looking for down the road, we're getting drifted.
And, you know, I can appreciate that sentiment, I guess, the one thing that it was saying in response, which, again, comes back to kind of the way that I try to pull back the conversation. This conversation is not about my evaluation. This conversation is about what we want to accomplish for the district, and that is my evaluation. And if we're doing what the board desires for the district, then that means we're headed in a positive direction, and, you know, again, I understand that there's probably a conversation that we need to have about just how that technically intersects with my evaluation. I get it, obviously, I want that for everybody, but that's, that's not the focus of this. The focus of this is what do we want for the district, and if we're moving in the right direction, then we all get an affirmative evaluation. If we're not, then none of us get an affirmative evaluation if we're not doing, you know, what we need to do for the district. But, so I appreciate that, but I, you know, the timing of when I got hired is what it is. My commitment to you coming in, though, is I don't want you to lose any ground because of the timing of this. I really, it was important to come in and try to get up to where the pace of the year in the district was, so...
Thank you for pulling that all out in the line with Dr. Schuler. I think, I think you're right. I don't think we're struggling over what it is we need to do. I think we're struggling over in the technical communications and understanding of how we're going to do it and who's going to do it, and I think to say, to put it in a nutshell the way you said, you own it all, and we, as a board, own it all. I love Mr. Paulson's suggestion to put the board committees right in line with each of those five focus areas is a great suggestion, and it makes us all accountable for what needs to get done. So, thank you for putting up with this discussion and for having this discussion. I think it was very worthwhile, and I know that, you know, we get into detail on finances, so to get into detail on stuff like this, I think, is also appropriate when you have, to just avoid misunderstandings in the future. So, having said that, I'll make committee assignments. If there's no more discussion on the goals, I'll make those committee assignments public, and then we'll take our vote. Is that, is that where we're at with everybody? Okay. I go to the finance committee. I would appoint Mr. Madison and Mrs. Swanson. Women in Teaching, Mr. Vroman and myself will handle that. Facilities, Mr. Gambiani and Mr. Paulson. Community Engagement, Mr. Vroman and Mrs. Cockhill. And Human Resources, Mrs. Swanson and myself. So thank you all for volunteering and for agreeing to serve on multiple committees. I appreciate that. I try to honor your requests and spread the workload, and I look forward to accomplishing our goals and our four areas of concentration through our work on the committees. I think we'll be in great shape there, so...
So I have a follow-up question. We need to determine which committee is responsible for which of these four areas. Did that official?
It'll be really easy.
Yeah, I know it'll be easy.
The two student learning ones will go to teaching and learning, the finance will go to finance, and facilities to facilities.
Should we discuss that?
And then you'll put together some way to get to that technical intersection that Dr. Schuler was talking about, and then get back to us as to how that's going to happen?
If that's okay, maybe the leadership team should go ahead and do that, and then, is that okay with you, Mr. Vroman? If I volunteer you to help me with that? Okay, yeah, I think we'll do that, and then I'll move on from there.
I don't want to take up time to do this tonight, but I am going to send around one other sheet to you now that the committee assignments are done. All five of the committees have work to do. I know that we have work to be accomplished in some meetings that we need to schedule, so I'm just asking for a little bit of feedback from you on times that you're available for us to schedule those, so that Mrs. Sender can start working with committees to get some dates scheduled over the next month and a half, so I would appreciate that feedback.
Okay, so if we're ready to vote on this particular topic, can I ask Mrs. Sender to call the roll, or is there any more discussion? All right, Mrs. Sender, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Cockhill?
Yes.
Mr. Vroman?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Intiver?
Yes, thank you very much. Our next item is appointment of the IASB delegate to the delegate assembly. Is there anyone who would like to make an appointment?
I have to appoint myself, because prior other commitments at the conference, I would have loved to go to the delegate assembly. I joined that party. There's some reason why I have to, I think I do. Super devil.
I'd be happy to do that, if no one else is so inclined.
I'd like to make a motion that Joanne Cockhill be our delegate.
Or whatever that is.
Second. Okay, moved by Mr. Madison, seconded by Mrs. Swanson to appoint Mrs. Cockhill as our delegate to the delegate assembly as at the IASB convention. All in favor? Aye.
That's okay, we still need to vote online.
I'm sorry, I always forget to tell you to vote online. Opposed? Thank you, Mrs. Cockhill, we appreciate it.
It'll be an open debate. Do I have to move on?
I just want to point out that Mrs. Cockhill did not vote for herself.
I'm mad at my screen again.
Are there any technical problems over there?
No, I'm fine.
First, you should vote on some of the technical...
Okay, the next item on the agenda, while we're working through that, except... Okay, the next item on the agenda while we're working through that, acceptance of the IASB resolutions and direction for delegate voting. So, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the IASB resolutions and direct the delegate on how to vote? Mrs. Swanson?
I move that we accept the resolutions as recommended by the resolutions committee and vote thus.
Moved by Mrs. Swanson, seconded by Mr. Paulson, that we accept the recommendations of the resolutions committee and direct Mrs. Cockhill to vote accordingly. Is there any discussion? Having heard no discussion, can we just do a roll call, I mean, a voice vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion this. And vote online, please. Okay, we have two regular reports tonight, the monthly financial report and the full year request report. Are there any questions from board members on the regular reports? Reports from board members. Are there any board committee reports, considering that we just appointed committees tonight, and we heard from the finance committee, are they running? Okay, no committee reports. Reports from board members. Any other reports?
You know, just quickly, and it's, obviously the people from Leeburg and Little South left already, but at Veterans Day festivities, I had a chance also to stop in a health class where they had some guests from a place called Serenity House, and these were people who were young men really, who were still dealing with the consequences of previous drug addiction and such, and really did a great job of talking to the class in a way that, you know, unless you hear your peers or your almost peers talk to you about what it really means for their lives, it's not the same as book knowledge. And I just wanted to commend them. I understand they do that once a semester for all of their health classes. So, you know, something that is really impacting their entire lives. So, good job for them.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Mr. Paulson?
Oh, and Veterans Day yesterday, I just wanted to thank you for this wonderful presentation that all the middle school district, I remember, I saw it, and I know the kids were very engaged, so I painted for that way the service of every time yesterday, enlightening those kids and students.
It was a real privilege and a real pleasure. I really enjoyed it. And as I mentioned, the faith of the board in putting it together brought back a lot of memories and a lot of good memories. So, I really enjoyed it.
And it's a presentation, can we dive in the light or to the dark?
I want to comment also on the fact that we had the chat with the board, I guess is the proper term, that we'd north a couple of years, and I thought it was a very interesting and very informative process. It was students, you know, generally we have, you know, parents as well. There, this is purely the students, and I thought some of the things they brought up clearly enlightened me about, you know, some of the things that are important to our students and so on. So, it was really very good appropriate, and, you know, I was glad that we have the chats with the board, and, you know, I was absolutely pleased. It was really only students in this case, and it really looked well.
I think our students, I'm so impressed. I agree with you in that. They really chined, and they, we're so grateful that we were listening to them. I think we need to listen to our students more, and I'm happy that a couple of years ago, I think it was at Mrs. Swanson's request that we started doing this at the high schools with the students. So, I think that's, it's a good thing to keep going.
I just want to commend Phase Four, when she pulled out this, we get a copy of what sent all the teachers. I think this is just, is it weekly?
No.
Or monthly?
Monthly.
Monthly, okay. But it just gives 60 ideas on how to do quick formative assessments, I mean, short videos on things. Just, I mean, such great help to send out to all of them and for middle school, high school, district-wide. I think this is fabulous to get right to them and give out resources.
Can I say one other? One thing I wanted to mention, and I know it's very late, but the PTA hosted a breakfast for us and for the entire administrative team this morning at the school service center. And I wanted to make sure that they got a big shout out and a big thank you from the board and the entire community, and as the board I think represents the entire community, to say thank you for all you do for our schools. This year, between our PTAs and booster clubs, $500,000 was raised, and that all went toward capital improvements and enhancements to student learning such as Explore Hard Day and field trips and artist-in-residence and things like that. $500,000 is a lot of money. And I just wanted to know that from the bottom of my heart and from the hearts of the rest of the board, we really thank you. We really appreciate it, and we know the community values your contribution. Another thing that was talked about was that 320,000 man-hours were devoted by our parent volunteers to our students. And now, in my world, 2,000 hours is in the in-year, and so I calculated that out to 160 full-time equivalents. So, if you think about that, that's a full 10% over and above our current staff. So, 160 full-time equivalents worth of work from our volunteers. It's just amazing. It's astonishing. And we really appreciate the support we get from our parent groups to our students. So, thank you again, and in behalf of the entire community, thank you. Any other reports from board members?
I think it's football, you know, students. We encourage our captains to.
Go Tigers. Okay, our topics for future discussion, five-year financial projections coming up again, and facilities planning and review. Our next regular meeting is December 10th at 7:30 at Lowell Elementary School. Public comments, we do have one person sign up for public comments. Kim, vote. I don't know if you were here at the game meeting, the same rules apply, three minutes, respectful. Okay, Mr. V.
Also, I want to acknowledge, thank you, a little suggestion, and then, so, 10 years ago, we started, we started with an effort to provide a safer passage to students and residents west and north of Leeburg High School. We started off to put sidewalks in long towns. It was, no sidewalks were there, so we started to do that. With Dr. Harris's help, Mr. Farley's help, city, county, township, it's a pretty consulting effort. We finally have sidewalks over there, and we also now have a traffic light that is conducive to traffic to allow students to walk safely from the west over to Leeburg. So, thanks, Bill. Thanks to Paul Redman and the city, a number of people that did it. But it did take 10 years along the way. Mayor Grass, County Board Olson, a number of people that always asked for the district to take a leadership vote, and that was kind of lacking. So, my point here is, we can leverage a lot of the safe passage. Sidewalks are a good thing for the, west of Sandberg here, there's no sidewalks, right? North of Sam, north of here, there's not a lot of sidewalks either. So, if the district takes a little initiative, works with the city and the county and stuff like that to put more sidewalks in, probably will leave a lot of traffic and congestion with drop-offs and pickups in Sandberg in particular, but also I would suggest around the whole district area. Now, I'm coming to my ask. Just north of here, and I live on Woodline, I live about six houses away from here. And my homes are petitioning to annex, for the city to annex parcel land just north of Woodline, called the Saks. And the proposal is to connect north of Woodline with this Woodline, which would create a through street. And we're not opposed to the annexation. It's actually a good thing. It brings more revenue to the district and stuff. We are, however, opposed to creating a through street. And we're opposed to that for safety reasons, right? More traffic, there's already a congestion at pickup and drop-off here. Create more traffic through this area, create more problems for the teachers to back in and back out, problem of drop-in. It'll also impact the citizens along the north Woodline Street. There's a bus stop up there. There's a lot of accidents on Geneva and Woodline. So, they're very much opposed to virtually all the residents in this area. There's a city council meeting on November 24th, public hearing, very much opposed to that through street. So, my ask for you guys is, and when you look at a school, or you look at bad guys coming in, bad guys going out, Colasaks, schools that are numbered up, hard for a guy to get in and get out, through street's a little bit easier to get in and get out. I work in public safety all the time. It's pretty well documented. So, my ask is that you guys review Woodline Place, review that development, review the traffic cameras, right, and take a role in it, right? I would ask you, I ask you guys to help him weigh in on the district, weigh in on the city council meeting, go to the public hearing, go to, you know, poll and go to SAK, and help us oppose that through street. That's it. We stand with you. Thank you. And I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. V. We have no need for closed session tonight, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So, move?
Moved by the movement, Mr. V.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Swanson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much.